Because you're the only one that wrote that. Scott. He just looks good. I cherish in my ear.
Jonathan, he was someplace more.
You're already diamond me out?
Really healthy.
Not from Pennsylvania.
Or it's very bad. We're going to bring you on government county planning commission meeting for March eighth to order. Can I apply please? Um, so let the record show that we have a quorum. Uh, we have Jill online, uh, members in the boardroom and I think we're reading on Bob and Obed. Um, are there any, before we get started with our agenda, uh, are there any board comments? People in the room? Any word at Jill?
Hi guys.
Hey.
There um, I still have this like viral thing and I, I think my kids are trying to kill me.
All right. Um, next order of business in thirty minutes, uh, do I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from February eighth, two thousand twenty-three? Motion, so I guess I can't, second, any board comments or corrections to the board meeting minutes? I don't know about. Um, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? Um, any public comment from anybody in the room before we get started with our agenda? Any public comment from anybody online? Before we get started. It's like it's all staff, so much part. Seeing none, then we'll move into our first order of business, which is community planning assistance contract action, uh, for Hattborough. And Abington Township and a call on our morning hour.
Good morning, how are you? Uh, these are actually the last two contracts for our two thousand twenty-three renewal cycle. Uh, we'll have eleven more in three regions up, uh, for next January. Uh, so perhaps, excuse me, um, we're to do a contract renewal, January first, uh, through two thousand twenty-five, December thirty-first. Uh, we're in the process of completing the comprehensive plan, uh, for Abington will be helping them finish that and get that adopted. Uh, and then as with most comprehensive planning processes, we'll jump into implementation, which will include updates to new zoning and some division ordinance as needed. Um, they also view us as an extension of their internal staff. Um, so we also participate, uh, in their internal staff meetings and pre-development meetings. Uh, so we assist with that as well. Uh, for Hattborough again, three-year contract starting January first of this year. Uh, we recently finished comprehensive plan for them several years ago, so we're in an implementation state now, we're writing a full zoning update for them. Uh, and that is ongoing, and when that's completed, we'll jump into the subdivisioning and spell ordinance for an update. Uh, we also provide sort of ad hoc assistance with them, uh, for recreation planning and grant writing. And you have the contract numbers, uh, in your resolution.
And who are the, I know Michael, Mike Narco, which is for Abington, this for Hattborough?
John Miklos.
Before we go into any comments or questions, we'll just put the, uh, resolution in, in the record. Uh, before we have MTPC resolution twenty-three thousand three point one, the community planning assistance contract resolution of March eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Consistent with two contracts, first one is contract two nine three, which is Abington Township. Uh, length of contract is January first, two thousand twenty-three to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Total cost is ninety thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars. Uh, shared fifty percent to the municipality, fifty percent by county. And then we have contract three hundred, uh, with Hattborough, Hattborough Borough. Uh, same length of time, uh, total cost of seventy-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars. Uh, once again, split fifty-fifty between the municipality and county. And I so moved, is there a second? Move the second in our comments or questions from board members? In the room?
I have one, I, I think this is great, but we're approving something that's already started. So I would suggest in the future, just by a matter of sequence. And if we could approve something before it starts, then our approval is meaningful rather than. Post-starting and.
Yeah, this is not uncommon, only because we work with the schedules of the. We work with the schedules in municipalities until they can get them approved by their board, and then they come back to us and how it works, how it coordinates with our schedule. So it's sometimes, most of the time, it's behind the date, we very rarely get them accomplished before the date starts.
That's, that's certainly the goal, and I think we did probably three quarters of them before the end of the year. Uh, in this case, Hattborough actually approved it last October. Uh, the contract was lost in the mail, and so we had to get them copies back. They delayed getting it back to us. Abington didn't actually prove it until February, renegotiations with them and in changing the level of service. And that took a little bit longer than expected. Uh, and it's just easier to, although I understand your point, it's easier to keep it with the January first date than move it to March first, because then we're off the calendar year, it gets a little messier.
It just looks funky.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody looking back at the record.
It's about to be, we're now March, it is.
You're putting something in March that you started in January first, that's odd, and you know, two years from now, five years from now, when somebody looks back at. May cause a problem, I'm just saying, if we can try to avoid it, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I do make every effort, the, and the invoices don't start until April, uh, of that year, so April, October, the invoices. And just the last point is, I, I don't have a lot of leverage in this situation, because we're certainly not going to terminate service, because they, they delay a month or two, so it's, it's difficult for me to.
Right.
Demand.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments? Jill, Obed, I see Bob has joined us, anybody?
No, I don't have, I, I don't have a comment.
Any comments from publics, from the staff or public? Seeing none, all those in favor? Hi. Great, thanks, I look forward to this year's contracts.
Yep. Be without me for three months.
Okay. Next up, we have, uh, update on the Monaco Pike study. And we have some guests in the room, so I'll let Matt take care of that. Good morning, Matt.
We do, good morning, good morning, everybody. Uh, Matt, transportation planning assistant manager, with me today, Lorraine Sando Grant, uh, principal transportation planner, and our guest from the Roads and Bridges Assets and Infrastructure Department. Uh, Tom O'Brien in the back is Roads and Bridges Administrator. Uh, and Susan Geisner Cologne with McCormick Taylor, the county's Roads and Bridges Engineer. Uh, we are going to, you. Sorry, I, I could go like that too, but.
I would just.
Big file.
Thanks. Is this? So can you guys get that shared? Uh, this is actually a pretty momentous day, as Rob's getting this, uh, squared away and shared for the both transportation planning and roads and bridges department. Uh, we are officially moving into phase one maintenance and protection of traffic for the Ridge Pike Section D project today in White Marsh and Springfield Township. So it will actually look like construction is happening, even though utility relocations and all sorts of stuff has been happening for almost a year now. Um, so this is a pretty big deal for us. Um, we are. This is now working, there we go. Um. We're, we're happy that Ridge Pike's going forward, Section B in Plymouth Township is. Going to get advertised out for, um, contractors to be on very, very soon, so Ridge Pike has been, uh, the focus of. I'd say our transportation planning and roads and bridges efforts for county-owned roadway studies for the last few years now. Um, but we're planners, we like to keep looking forward and looking toward, towards the future, so what's our next thing that we're working on? That's why we were trying to compile Monaco Pikes and. Work on what that next corridor project should be for the twenty thirties and beyond. So just as a reminder for everyone, this is not the first time that the planning commission board has. Did Rob say something, or Bob say something?
I see. Yeah. Well, he did, but nothing relevant to her.
Uh, so just as a reminder to this board, we have been here before to talk about Monaco Pikes, I was about, I think, May or June of last year. Um, when we were presenting the final draft of the plan, uh, with our guests from McMahon and Gannon Fleming. This whole plan came together in the two thousand eighteen era, um, and actually got it into the tip, so it was a federally funded, uh, study of six major county-owned corridors. Um. Prepared between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-two, between McMahon Associates and Gannon Fleming, kind of sharing the work on these corridors. We had six different ones. Across the county meant to answer those questions. What's next after Ridge Pike for a major, uh, you know, eight, nine-figure county overhaul? And what can roads and bridges do in the near term, um, on our county-owned roadways? We're hoping we're going to be able to answer both of those questions with this particular presentation. So as a reminder, um, the six county-owned corridors, you have Butler Pike. Forget the, like, it doesn't really show up on the screen here. Butler Pike in, uh, White Marsh, Upper Dublin Townships, Easton Road in Abington and Sheltonham. That one works. Yeah, better. Fancier one. Uh, Germantown Pike from East Naren into Lower Providence, Swamp Pike, Limerick, New Hanover and Douglas. And Garyville Pike in Marlboro and Upper Hanover, oh, and I forgot, Sommetown, of course, in Lower Winnet, Upper Winnet and Tallemanson. We, at the county planning commission, have been looking at these corridors even before Monaco Pikes got started. Um, we have had Germantown Pike and Sommetown Pike identified in our transportation vision plans as part of the county comprehensive plan for a couple of iterations now. Not just Monaco twenty forty, but even shaping our future, the plan from two thousand five. Had both of these corridors listed as our first priority for some future projects when money was to become available. Monaco twenty forty, of course, listed these as vision projects. You see the, uh, excerpt of the map from the actual comprehensive plan shown here below, and we had four different, uh, listings and items on here for corridor and intersection improvements. And widening approaches at the intersection of Valley Forge Road and Sommetown Pike. You see this, uh, current excerpt, um, all of these numbers are still in gray, which means that we haven't actually kicked off design or engineering for these projects yet. Largely because we were trying to wait for this Monaco Pikes, um, study to get finished, to help us prioritize which one should be attacked first. We've had past studies, even before, um, those particular comprehensive plans. I probably have now inherited, uh, the bookshelf in my office, which has the most robust, um, collection of studies for transportation plans for Montgomery County projects. It used to be Leo Bagley's, then it was Matt Edmonds, and now it's living in my office, because I have the space. Um, like most of the areas throughout the county, transportation studies were really done, you had a big push in the early two thousands for a lot of roadways. Um, things changed in the overall transportation planning field, um, and a lot of the studies haven't been done nearly as frequently in the twenty teens and into the twenty twenties. Um, but we do have a couple of studies that, for our county-owned plans that we've done. This is the Germantown Pike Corridor Study that was prepared, uh, twenty years ago by McMahon Associates, and this is the Swamp Pike Corridor Operational Analysis Study. As you see on the screen here, done in nineteen ninety, um, from Canoni, so we have been looking and thinking about doing these over. A pretty substantial period, I think we started working on Ridge Pike twenty-some years ago at this point, so. It's been, it's been a while just to get us to this point, but we're now looking, uh, to use all the studies, both the ones that we've had in the past. And Monaco Pikes, which is really the first study that we've had with the, uh, complete streets policy in effect for the county. This is an excerpt from that two thousand and three Germantown Pike Corridor Study, and you can see, for the most part, what was focused on was levels of service at various intersections. Um, we have a few items where, uh, turning lanes were proposed in certain areas or signal modifications and improvements. We wanted to use Monaco Pikes to say, yes, moving vehicles throughout the county is still very important. But if we are also able to incorporate how bicycle traffic is moving around, how pedestrian traffic is moving around. How freight and other different types of vehicle movements can be studied. All of those considerations should be taken into account when we're trying to plan. The corridor for the next fifty, seventy-five, hundred years, rest of the twenty-first century.
What are conclusions and recommendations in this, in the studies?
There were, and you have. Pretty well seamlessly helped me to transition over to Lorraine. Um, the final report does reside at Monaco Pikes. Means we appreciate you keeping us on schedule. Um, but these, the report itself does contain some tables, um, for all of the different pipes. And I'm going to turn it over to Lorraine to help talk through what, uh, we're proposing specifically for Germantown and Sommetown.
Well, then let me ask a question, because you might get to this, and if I get into it, I'd like to know. How much of those recommendations were achieved from the past studies?
Oh, from these studies?
I'll let you talk to that.
It's not a good answer.
Yeah. He's looking back on them.
She'll keep me up here.
Especially after the holiday party, I love when Matt's on the hook.
I believe there have been, some of the improvements were made, a lot of the times, these get tied in with, um, the townships Act two oh nine studies, which are meant to say, if development is coming in, then specific targets need to be made on intersections. Um, and improvements. Some of the traffic signals have been upgraded, some of them, quite honestly, there hasn't been the money to touch it. Um, either from the township side or from the county side for a long time, so Monaco Pikes now is saying, okay. All of this is still out there, but what are the twenty twenty-two needs for this particular corridor, let's start from there and work forward.
So I'm curious, and, and this, I know these answers may not happen today, but I'm curious as to. What recommendations were achieved, what recommendations were implemented from the last studies? What recommendations were, but also what of those recommendations or work that was done from the last studies is. Going to have some type of tweaks or changes from the new study.
Not fighting for Monaco Pikes.
That's another way.
I can prob, I can probably answer some.
I know this is, I know there's a lot of information, uh, back and forth, and that may not have been collated, but that's something I'd be interested in, and because obviously things change in. Twenty-some years.
Sure, so we can take a look, I mean, these, these studies are thick, um, a lot of them is traffic counts and proposed signal study things, so there should be a. Slightly smaller list of, uh, actions that were proposed in here to review and see if they were implemented, so.
Well, you're finishing Monaco Pikes, so you really don't, you don't have that much.
Well, we finished the study.
No, but we're still, we're still, it's all your time. What Stephen's saying is really interesting, because. What we always get, um, the comments always, planners, plan, plan, plan.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and what we, what, as professional planners, I always hear from you, what really is important is implementation. And so the, the thing for people to understand is when we plan, how does that thoughtful, um, investigation really move to what we want? And there has to, it, what Stephen's asking, I think, is really important, how do we make that so it's more visually, visibly understandable? For people that are not just, whether they're consultants or not, who have the books that go into your office, but how do we make sure that? What we need to do is highlighted and advanced, because that's the only reason we're here. We're not here just to watch your pretty plans, which, which are fun and informative, it's to see that they get moved along.
And I think the second part of our presentation from Roads and Bridges is going to start digging into exactly how we're taking the plan and going into our own implementation, so. We, we appreciate the preemptive questions, and we can certainly try to look at this if it's something you're interested in, so, but I do want to turn it over to Lorraine for at least some of the, uh, explanation as to how some of these things happen to implement.
You have enough time to get your thoughts together.
Put on a black.
It did, honestly. To be perfectly honest with you, I didn't read that, that document. But I am intimately familiar with Monaco Pikes, so, and I do know some of the history here with projects that are being implemented right now, so. Um. This one.
Yeah, right there.
Right there, okay. So anyway, as he said, that's the website for Monaco Pikes. All six of these proposals are, of the reviews and the recommendations for each bike is, is there. Right now that we're only going to cover Germantown and Sommetown Pikes, because they've been identified as the county's priorities right now. Um. So Germantown Pike. Has been broken into two sections, basically. Um. And we're, I'm only going to go over the high priority. Uh, recommendations, okay, there, there are medium and low. As you'll see here, here's a medium, those are mediums, the only high priority on the western section of, of Germantown Pike is this, the intersection of Ridge Pike and Germantown Pike. Which already has a Penn dot job. And that's one of those implementations that you'll see that came out of that previous document, because of the level of service delays that there were there. And the crash history, so that's why that circle's going in there to connect those two pikes, okay? Penn Dot's got that job, and it should be let within the next year, by two thousand twenty-five at the latest, I think.
I was going to say, I just did review some, and I asked the county to review. Some of the, um, design as it relates to our section.
Right, it's, it's a design approval process right now, so because these other recommendations for along this strip are, um, are medium level, um, priorities. Uh, we didn't really, we're not going to really brief anything here, just to, I just want to let you know that, that that intersection there is a result of previous studies.
So I understand Germantown Pike being a priority, but why Sommetown over some of the others?
When I, can, can I wait, or, because I'm going to get, okay? Well, first of all, we, we looked at AABTs. And we looked at safety. Level, uh, the number of crashes on each.
ADDT.
ADD, the daily traffic counts.
Okay.
Those are the two highest. Daily traffic count roadways that we own.
Okay.
Okay, and they also have the most crashes. So.
Both of those roads? I mean, I get Germantown, I have you, it's a mess. But Sommetown.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get to that when I get to Sommetown, okay? So what we're going to look at, though, is the area of Germantown Pike between Valley Forge Road. Uh, where is, I'm sorry, Valley Forge Road here. And, uh, Whitehall Road, okay, which is here. Um, this section of, uh, Germantown Pike. Has very high level of service delays. Uh, I think it's, uh, up to thirteen thousand five hundred is the AADT there. And, um, I think Valley Forge Road has. Valley Forge, the intersection of Valley Forge and Park here has eighteen crashes between, uh, twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, and Whitehall Road over here had twenty-six crashes between. Uh, twenty sixteen and twenty nine, twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen. So, um, the recommendation, so these are all, as you can see, all of these recommendations here are high priority recommendations. So these are the ones we're going to brief to you today. So get that visual burned into your brain, because I'm just going to go to the chart now, okay? So at Valley Ford and Park Avenue. The first one, um, it's, right now, it's, I think, three lanes coming into the intersection coming as you're traveling west. Uh, the recommendation is to add turning lanes. And convert the climbing, the center climbing lane into the right, uh, uh, left turn line, a two-way left turn line. So, and to add pedestrian and bicycle facilities where possible, can you read that?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think it's my eyes.
I think it is his eye.
Might be my eyes, I don't know, okay, and like I said, that's a high crash intersection there. Um, Trooper Road is the next one that was a high priority, uh, intersection. If, so if you're familiar with Trooper Road. That comes in and takes.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so if you're familiar with where Trooper Road comes into, um, Germantown Pike. At, in Worsister, uh, there is. There's a recommendation for traffic signal upgrades and convert, again, that, the center lane that comes up there into a two-way left turn lane. And adding pedestrian bicycle facility, so there's that recommendation of both Valley Forge and Trooper Roads, and then, um. Uh, but what's a little bit difficult here is that there's, um, at the corner of Trooper Road and Germantown is a, a historic property. That, um, church.
Cemetery.
The cemetery, this. The cemetery that's located there in the corner, I think Penn Dot is already, or we've already updated three of the corners, or was it?
It was Penn Dot.
Updated three of the corners.
And we're in the process of this year, this section of Germantown Pike would be repaved, so pushes us into upgrading. Trying to upgrade the one corner, Penn Dot did not successfully get the property owner to allow it to happen, so we have to go through the same steps. Um, but most likely because of the historic nature, it won't happen, but we have to document that we attempted it.
Why do you have to deal with the property owner? Is it, why do you like?
So with ADA ramps, if it goes outside of right of way. You don't have to acquire the right of way, you just get permission from the property owners to. Establish that ramp. Um, because it's usually only, you know, a foot or two outside of the right way, but the grading would impact their property, so they usually give you permissions. To do it without obtaining the easement, because the ramp itself isn't on their property, but the grading is so skewed, which it is.
Thank you.
Um, the next intersection is Pot Chop Road. Um, so they're also looking for, that's an intersection that's recently, um. I think there's new developments on, on one side of this, um, intersection. Uh, but they're looking for traffic signal upgrades and adding pedestrian bicycle facilities. This whole stretch of, uh, Germantown Pike has seen a lot of redevelopment in, in the last decade, so there's a, the, the, the residential density there has grown, and they're looking for pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Plus, Pot Chop Road is a popular road to cross the county on, when you cross over German, to cross over Germantown Pike. So, um, and that's a high priority. Trooper Road to Whitehall Road. Now that whole stretch. So Trooper Road to Whitehall Road. This here, all stretched, and the reason that's all blue is because they're looking to widen. They're recommending that.
Good, we did.
They're recommending that we widen, uh, provide a five-lane cross-section where feasible, and add pedestrian and bicycle, um, facilities also here. This is a very high, um. High cost. Recommendation because of the right of way that we need to be required. To, to widen Germantown Pike between those two roads. Between potch, between, I'm sorry, between Whitehall Road and Whitehall, uh, and Trooper Roads. So, the next, um, two, this one might actually be the easiest to accomplish right here. Are the Sunset Avenue and Sandra Lane Intersections, and for those of you who aren't familiar, those are right. Here. Um, sorry, right here, these two stoplights right here. They're, so the roads are offset. And the, and I guess the signals are not timed properly, because they're very old signals there, so that, they're looking for, they're asking for, you know, they're asking us to do a signal upgrades there. So that's probably the lowest cost priority on this list. And the final one is the, um, the Whitehall Road Intersection in East Norton, and that's, um. Traffic signal upgrades, pedestrian and bicycle facilities where possible. That intersection was recently upgraded when Einstein went in there. But it's still a high crash. Um, area, that's the one who, I don't know if I told you that. Uh, there's eighteen crashes at Valley Forge and Park between, I had to tell you that, and then there's twenty-six, though, at the Whitehall Road Intersection.
Do we have the nature, like, do we have a nature with, uh, due to? The intersection structure, or they, due to, to drivers?
I do have that. It's in the study, and. Uh, the intersection with Whitehall Road saw twenty-six crashes, none of the crashes at the intersection involved a pedestrian, thank God. Most of them were angle crashes, which is attributed to congestion and high turning movement volumes.
Left turners sneaking through, doing things they shouldn't do at a intersection like this, is the typical.
And the Valley Forge Road was, um, again, uh, none of them involved a pedestrian, but most crash types were. Uh, rear-end and angle crashes, which is mostly congestion. And, um, turning movement related, so.
And rear-end crashes are because people don't, they're self-driving, to get your car stopped in front of them. Um, the pedestrian, I'm sorry, the biking facilities that we're talking about in these are, have they all been coordinated with their?
Monaco Pikes, I mean, um, bicycle.
Bike.
Thank you. Bike. And walk.
We like to screw people up by sometimes doing Monaco first, and then sometimes doing it second, just want to keep you on your toes.
Steve?
Thank you much to screw me up. Okay, next slide. So we're done with, um, Germantown Pike?
You have a question, Bob? You're on mute, Bob.
Thanks, Steve, uh, yes, just a quick question, when you talk about, um, bicycle, you know, pedestrian bicycle. Facilities that you're going to put at, we'll say, Park Avenue. Or, you know, Trooper Road, what, what specifically are you talking about? Are you talking about physical or painted line striping, or what's, what's anticipated for those areas?
Well, that's basic, they're just saying we should need to add bicycle facilities on the roadway, and then we need to work with the townships. To figure out whether or not they, you know, we can do, because, um, we don't own Valley Ford Road, so it's, I guess it's Penn Top, basically, we coordinate with. To see whether or not we can get protected bike lanes.
So no engineering has been done.
Right, right, it's just a recommendation, the actual, the specific type of facility is, is left up to coordination.
The Monaco Pike Study at this stage has identified there's a need, and the, the user is there, and they're not being accommodated or provided for. How we are able to achieve that will be determined in the next steps, as the orders are focused on.
I answered your question, Bob.
Uh, yeah, Nicole. Uh, yeah, the, um, Nicole, does Germantown and Pot Shop have uh, bike lanes already?
No, no.
Okay.
Core section of this quarter that we're talking about. Does at this stage, no.
But I would just add that as part of Monco Pike's every quarter that was studied, we do have what. Envisioned typical section, so there is on paper, um, at least a. Vision, let's say, it doesn't mean it can come to fruition, but there is a vision on. Specific sections of each roadway based on constraints. So it, there is information there, but whether or not it'll be. Reality once it's studied is the question.
Right, uh, and there are, there are pedestrian facilities at both of those intersections, Valley Forge and German and uh, Whitehall Road. It's just that they're not at all four corners.
It's not complete, they're, they're sidewalk, there's some ramps.
But it's not complete, so. Are there any more questions on Germantown Pike? Okay, I'm gonna move into Summietown Pike.
Let me, let me say, anybody, any other board members have any questions?
Yes, I, I have. Yes, uh, well, Germanton Pike definitely is not friendly for bikes. And I say that because I bike every day. And going to the farm park in order to go to Norristown. And usually I had to take the sidewalk, uh, because definitely Germanton Pike is not friendly for, for bikes. Uh, the intersection of, of Hoy Hall and, and uh. And Germanton Pike is, is where actually the Wawa was placed and established. And I wonder if many of those accidents has to do with the cars getting into the Wawa or not. Therefore, eh, perhaps it will be worth to understand a little bit better, eh, what is the solution there because. I am thinking that maybe many of those eh, accidents are related. Eh, with the entrance to the gas station. And because I have seen it, I have seen cars turning eh, sometimes in not uh, the most prudent way. Into the, the Wawa. Therefore, perhaps the solution, it has to do mostly eh, with certain signals and certain dynamics. Of entrance to the, to the station, to the Wawa station. Therefore, I, I am just saying something, I don't have data. But what I have seen, you know, and um. I just wanted to mention that if the facilities, the bike facilities is used in crossing, or it means that actually. Eh, Germanton Pike, at least in that section, will be friendly with the bikes, no? Because you have the, the, the farm park between Hoy Hall and I would say North Wales. And there is not really anything that, that allows the bikes, only the red stop that you have to be really careful. Into getting into the farm park in a safe way, you know? Therefore, I, I am just commenting this because perhaps you have to consider also North Wales and. And, and, and Germanton Pike, because that is actually one of the main entrance to the farm park. Thank you.
That, that, the fact that Ger- that the uh. That the farm park is where it is along Germantown Pike was mentioned in the study. As a reason to, to up, to upgrade and add pedestrian and bicycle facilities at that intersection, so as, as a way. As a matter of fact, from Valley Forge all the way down to that intersection as a way, a means of getting to the valley, to the farm park. So, but it doesn't, it makes absolute sense of it that uh, that intersection has so many issues. Because since the wa- well, the Einstein was there first and then the Wawa, it's, it's really increased the uh. The A A D T on that, of that stretch, I believe, so, and that's all anecdotal, but it just makes.
The only thing is in that intersection of Hoy Hall. And Germanton Pike, the farm park has not a, an entry. Actually, you have to walk your bike on the grass. Therefore, it will be worth also to think to have a direct entry to the, to the farm park. On that site, if that is the intention.
That makes sense. We're gonna move on to um, Summietown Pike now. Um, Summietown Pike, this is the section that, this is broken into two sections, obviously, because we only own between um. Broad Street and Forty Foot Road. And the next section, and this is all high, this, well, most of this is, this is high, the intersection with Suppley Road, um. Between Forty Foot Road and Valley Forge Road, that section and Forty Foot Road to Green Lane Road here. Is another high priority, okay? There is some, there is uh, no, they're all medium and low priorities. On the section between uh, North Wales and Bethel Pike. Okay, um, another one of those uh, improvements that probably was studied previously and is coming to fruition though. Is the intersection with Bethel Pike right now. And that's, that's in design with Penn Dot. And this one here, not Wellington, but right here, this intersection with two O two is currently under, as everybody is, I'm sure, aware of reconstruction. And that's due to the level of service delays that were there previously and probably uh, high crashes. Years and years and years. Um, so there are recommendations, they're medium and lows, and we're gonna focus on uh, between Town Mans. I mean Forty Foot Road and Valley For- and Broad Street, sorry, and Broad Street, oops, sorry. Yeah, this is Summietown Pike, so there were three recommendations basically that were high priorities for this stretch of road and um. And I'm gonna tell you why these are all high, it's because um, even though. Because there's two projects already in the works on the other section between North Wales and Bethel Pike. There's nothing currently programmed for the stretch between Forty Foot Road and Broad Street, um, and. I do wanna, I did wanna point out though, because it, it's when I, I had to do a double take when I read this, that. Um, between Forty Foot Road and Broad Street. In the same timeframe, twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, there were a hundred ninety-two crashes, one fatal. Um, and there were a hundred fifty-six between North Wales and Bethel Pike, one fatal.
It's public high school traffic, in the morning, high school traffic. That road coming from both directions to get to North Penn High School.
And that was mentioned in the study, with the, with the incoming ninth, the plans are to remove the ninth grades. To the high school too, which will just exacerbate that problem.
And I mean, the, the change that we've seen in schools, particularly high schools with the pandemic. Of every parent either driving their kid to school or their kid driving to school and the buses coming in half empty or less. It is a real issue.
Mine was Burke starting around six time of the day and traffic getting to the heist, to the uh, turnpike.
And it's unbelievable that all the way up, cause I, yeah.
The data show of the age of the individual.
It, no, it did not.
That might be an education piece that we.
Well, it's, and it, and it was by, and this is the, where uh, the Germantown Pike study uh, identified intersections with high crash rates. This was just in, this was identified by section. Cause there are so many more stoplights in these sections than there are along Germantown Pike. Um, so the first one is uh, the Forty Foot Road to Green Lane Road in Town Mans. And it's a short stretch, maybe half a mile or, well, it's not quite a mile. Um, but there is one to three, four, five stoplights in that, in that sec. In, in, in that stretch of, of roadway and most of these. The hard, they're high priority, but they're traffic signal upgrades, the timing needs, they're all older, not all of them, but I'm sure the Forty Foot Road. Intersection and the um, the one there on the other side of the. The office complex are newer signals, the rest of them though are all older signals and they all need to be synchronized.
So all the way on Summietown Pike, if you would look at the increase in signals from. The nineteen nineties to now, I mean, they're triple, you know, I've traveled that road for years and years and. I was on it last Thursday and I, 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 I felt like I was in Manhattan. It's, it's really, it's staggering now, and it's intermittent, sometimes it's like that and sometimes it's, so the people who have to drive regularly. Don't know how to.
It all depends on the time.
How to schedule their time, you know, they give themselves an extra twenty minutes and then their, their meetings or work. Early and then they don't, and then they're, they're late, and I'm sure that's what you hear as engineers, it's just frustrating.
Um, the next um, is Forty Foot Road to Valley Forge Road. And um, those, the recommendations were create a consistent five-lane cross-section with two lanes in each direction and then the center. Two-way left turn line and then upgrade pedestrian facilities. There are um. Because that's uh, the commercial area of Town Mans and they, they would like to add sidewalks, at least on one side, I believe it said, of the roadway. Um, so there's residential, still uh, residential developments in between the commercial developments, so. Um, and then Suppley Road in Upper Gwinnett Township, um, it's. They're looking for. Oh, that's where the westbound lane drop is, so if you're going west, that's where it narrows down to one lane. And they're um, they're recommending eliminating the lane drop and making it a consistent uh, width through that area too. So, so those are the three projects, the high priority projects listed on uh, Summietown Pike. Okay, does anybody have any questions about Summietown Pike? No questions. Okay, thank you, and I will be followed by Susan. Dyson Gerkelone from Roads and Bridges.
No, I need, what, what's that, everything?
Yeah, right one.
So I'm here to, hello. I'm just kinda talk about how we have implemented, but also to give you guys a overview of what we've been doing for the last ten years. Is some of what we've been doing, eh, it's not long, I'm keeping it short, you can ask as many questions as you want, but we're not gonna go into too much detail. Um, just so that you can see kinda how this has evolved and how we got to the point of even thinking about Monco Pikes. So those two pictures are actually current pictures, um, the first one's repaving on Butler Pike. And the other one was a stormwater management improvement on Garyville Pike. On Garment County Roads, just so you guys know, uh, Monco Pike's for, uh, focused on about forty-three miles of what the county owns. But the county owns seventy-five miles of roadways, so um, some of them are obviously much smaller, if we looked at the major roads. But what have we been doing for the last ten years? So back in twenty thirteen, the county decided. It was time to initiate an annual road program, we need to focus on really the drivability of our roads. You can't even yet focus on the improvements the road needs, we need to make sure that. Our constituents can get from point A to point B um, with a smooth, smooth driving surface. So since twenty fourteen, we have repaved fifty-two miles of roads and we have upgraded a hundred quadrants with ADA compliant. Ramps, so it's ramps, eh, it's the pedestrian push buttons. Um, twenty twenty-two, it was decided we upgraded all of our line painting to epoxy paint, this was for visibility reasons. During all types of rain events, you know, storms, nighttime. And then in twenty twenty-two, we did install the curb and gutter along Garyville Pike, it was addressing an erosion problem. Along a shoulder and it ultimately. Brought the water to a storm inlet, which it was not making it to.
So I had a question for you about the repaving, you said two thousand thirteen, you started, you started a repaving project.
Not a project, in twenty thirteen, what we did is we went out and we assessed all seventy-five miles of our roads and. And prioritized the severity of the need for repaving, so the actual repaving started in twenty fourteen.
So have you repaved all seventy-five miles of?
At, we're at fifty-two, as of the end of twenty twenty-two.
And what do you, what's your expectation on having to go back and repave? Timeline, having you go back and repave those roads that you've already paved, do you have any sense of what that timeline is?
Typically, um, your wearing surface is usually good for fif- we, we ballpark fifteen years. Um, but every year before we, and let me say, when we create our annual road program, it's two years at a time, so every two years we're reevaluating. All of our roadways, making sure we're checking with our crews that are out in the field day to day. And if they have identified areas that have degraded, that we are addressing those.
And does the county have a program where they work with utility companies if they're doing? Like main replacements and stuff that we, that somehow you can get them to repave more than.
I'm sorry, what was that? We, we uh, have our H O P process. And during the H O P process, if there is a way to get the road widened. Um, to improve the left turn signal or to have a signal upgrade. And try to include that in the H O P process. The large um. Programs that are ongoing with P G L and others, if you put all the infrastructure monies. Uh, trying to make sure we're staying in front of the H O Ps and, and giving them. Um, requirements uh, to give them a permanent work on armor. So yes, the answer is, and a lot of developments that um, are built in the county. Um, the local townships take advantage of, you know, getting some additional with um, turn lanes. Like they do it all the Wawa's that you're seeing going. So in, in my uh, tenure here at Roads and Bridges. Um, we're way in front of the painting of our roadways. Years ago, all of our roads were terrible, we started a list. Our goal was to pave all of our roads. Every five years was the plan, cause there were so many bad ones. Now we're to the point where we're almost completed to go around on the paving, so all of our roads are twelve years or less. So fifteen-year uh, estimated lifetime, uh, twelve years, and then we try to hit the midline for our paving program. Um, it's usually a five billion dollar piece. Uh, we have five million dollars worth of uh, road rework, ADA ramps, engineering. So um, yeah, we've been on top of the roads. Fairly well, visibility was a big deal with that striping, that was. One point six million dollars just to have glass beads and epoxy paint that'll last for seven years. Instead of one year when the other paint, so there are a lot of improvements that are ongoing. You can see our new street sweeper out there, we're opening up the edges of the roads too, so we can see where the edges are. And uh, keeping the roads highly visible um, and free of trash and stuff, so that's about um. Five million dollars worth of uh, planning and machines themselves are two seventy-five apiece. So we have a high-end road treatment uh, programs, we updated our painting uh, process. And anybody who digs our road needs to repair the road with uh, certain criteria. Uh, for making sure their excavation doesn't settle and it seams don't pop, so. Yeah, I, I think our roads are in way better shape than they've ever been and soon they'll all be. Um, less than ten years old, so uh, the five-year plan with a. A thing that got kicked around in the community, hey, if we have a road, it's five years, like utility companies don't wanna put. Um, certain seams and the expensive seams, thermo seams we want. So with all of our H O Ps, we require them to put in thermo. Um, seals on the edges so water doesn't get in there and we end up with potholes. The other thing we're doing, we have a pothole killer uh, company that we're actually digging up old potholes and repairing sections of road. Not just filling with hot bags, so.
Oh, you shouldn't say that.
But I would, but to answer your question too, um. And if it, prior to initiating the, the, the repaving program, we reach out to all of the utility companies. Giving them our timeline of them, we're gonna pave so that the goal is, if you need upgrades, they upgrade it prior to us getting there, so we do coordinate them directly. To hopefully avoid having to reopen the road after it's freshly done. However, there are emergencies, so stuff does obviously happen. And then the last bullet on here is, okay.
When you repaint a road, you're putting those rumble strips on the side and in the middle, you know what I mean?
No, we don't do that um, as a practice, that is something that if we. No, we don't do that um as a practice, that is something that if we identify like a safety. Area, but no, some of our roads and I'm. And not obviously talking about the pikes, um aren't even wide enough to put like. The yellow line down the middle and the two white edges, just depending where you are, so.
They don't last long anyway, they could plow in uh ruined in time and they become a. A spot where we end up getting models because piles and stuff stick to the rumble strips.
Do they work for safety, do they work for safety reasons?
Safety is our number one priority, um.
But do the rumble strips work for safety reasons?
Good question, I have to look at the most recent data. Uh, I would think that there has to be some rational also putting in.
Yeah, that you there's safety data and you know, of course, you know, there's, you know. A particular location, you know, has certain characteristics, it's gonna be more effective than others, but as a general. Um, you know, research shows that it it does help keep people on the road, you know, it it gives a a. You know, an auditory as well, it's the feel of it can bring somebody back if they're, you know, either distracted or falling asleep. Um, but you know, the the level of effectiveness has a lot to do with the location as well and its characteristics.
All right, let's continue on, doesn't wanna get through this.
So and then just this year, we'll do another approximately five miles and six more quadrants. So implementation, how do we implement this plan? So even prior to Monco Pikes. We do review H O P permits and on a permit by permit basis, we were looking at first block Monco because it was the first plan, then. But bike Monco was incorporated, Complete Streets came, and now we have Monco Pikes, and with Monco Pikes, at least for the six pikes that were. Completely studied, we have an overall holistic vision of what we would like to see that road looking like, so instead of looking at something parcel by parcel. We actually have a bigger picture to look at. Um, so right now, Sunny Town Pike with Bethlehem Pike and North Town Road. There is an H O P by Lower Gwinnett Township, they did extend a culvert last year and this year they're doing. Pretty significant roadway improvements at this intersection, which does address a lot of the recommendations within Monco Pike for this intersection. And then we are in the initial stages of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five road program, and with that, we are looking at some of the recommendations and trying to select a few. That we can now start. Um, transition from like overall concept into actual design to actually come up with. Do we need a right turn lane, a left turn lane, but we have not at this point identified what locations that's gonna be, but the goal is that. In the twenty-four, twenty-five road program, we will address some of the recommendations and that will be a continual process as we create these programs. And with that.
Pike wasn't designed to provide engineering design. So that's definitely the next definitely way moving forward to work with.
So just to wrap up, we we wanted to make sure that there is room in, say, a county capital budget for a couple of smaller improvements along the way with what can fit in. Couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe a small couple of million, for some of these larger corridors, it's going to take. Larger scale federal funding and probably as long as it's taken for Ridge Pike to get in and out the door as. Is gonna take for this, so trying to handle it from all the different uh possibilities, some of the things that Roads and Bridges is just changing with how they do their. Um ongoing work is going to be an immediate payoff of this plan, and we're hoping for some of the longer term. Uh results as funding from the county and larger entities like the state and the feds becomes available.
So what's the next step for Monco Pikes? As far as, does it need to be adopted, does it need to, what's its?
This study is complete, study is posted up on on the website. Now it is how well do the planning commission and Roads and Bridges work together on getting some of these action items done? Looking through very briefly this twenty-two thousand three plan, as you're requesting, Steve, there are a lot of overlaps with things that. Are also showing up in this plan twenty years later. Things that we wanted to fund, nobody had the money to be able to fund, what's the next step for this plan? Probably more transportation infrastructure funding, yes, I know, we just had infrastructure week and. I I J bills are out there and everything else, we still need more money to do all the things that we want to do with our transportation system. So prioritizing, discussing with our partners, figuring out what are the most important uh cases to address from a safety perspective. Um from a mobility perspective, balancing everything together and using the available funding that we have. Addressing action items.
Um, I have made this comment before, but after hearing today's presentation, I feel even more strongly. Most people do not understand clearly that the. The fact that the county owns certain roads, that the state owns certain roads, they have no idea, they see, they see work being done such as. Ridge Pike and they don't know who's doing it, who to get angry with, what's happening, they know, but. But what I. What I had asked for, and I think it's really something we should consider, and Tom also. We need to have some kind of signage at these projects explaining to people as they go by. That this is a project to uh improve transportation, now I know we can't have a narrative up there.
They can barely, they can barely get through these areas.
One second, one second, Stephen. When we had infrastructure, I don't know, it was I C T, T twenty-one, whatever, when we had a lot of federal funding, there were at times. Signs up saying this is infrastructure or federal, was it? Develop even a generic sign saying this is a Montgomery County project to improve. Transportation, have a Q R code, if I can use a Q R code now, most people can't, so. It it could possibly be then specific to whatever the project is, have the county, so they would not be calling John Ernst. They would be going to a county website that would give status on a project, at least explain it. I'm on, I've been on that Ridge Pike project since it started, my mother lives right across. The the line into uh Philadelphia and my mother at ninety-seven says to me, what's happening with Ridge Pike? You know, and every couple months she'll say, what's happening, and I can't tell her. You know, I can tell her generally, I've called Matt to ask him, I said, my mother, I gotta get my mother off my back, Matt, tell me what's going on. But it's the issue we have with the potholes, if there was a Q R code. Or some way to let people know this is county responsibility, their county. Money and county energies are going toward this, I think it would help people understand this. I know, Stephen, but you know, it's really important. To kind of try try to make that more understandable to citizens, and I think we can do that.
So Roads and Bridges have made a major commitment to update our website. If you go to our website, you'll have um projects that are ongoing, all described, all the order what's happening. And where it's at. Um, we also make news announcements through uh our uh P R uh team. And those are also uh placed in newspapers, there was one in about. Bring one ninety in the newspaper, I guess, and they're saying that that's often in the proof or moving forward with a. Um, project, so.
Those things are not gonna resonate like Dolce is talking about. People driving, seeing something going on and seeing that it's attached to a Monco.
There's just so much going on, even if we had a sign that said it was a county road. It could be a P G O project on your county road, it's being done in Delaware.
You wouldn't have a sign there.
Try to do construction, especially with my superintendent here. Um, but yeah, a lot of times the work isn't even us on the road, it's someone else working on our road.
So then you wouldn't have a sign there, it's only a sign only where you're doing the work. And we want people to know that these are county dollars at work to improve the transportation system.
And subsequent years, like a lot of that street, we had stuff out and. Um, so we we thought about it internally the last couple of years, just haven't done anything about it, so we'll take it back, we'll, you know, talk to our folks in the Ridge Pike project and. And have that conversation with them, I don't know if it'll be a a standard sign that is used and everything, but. We hear what you're saying, we thought about it, we need to probably do something on the things we can control, and going forward, we'll have an internal discussion.
I think here's a solution now.
Yeah.
But we just, I mean, it's something that's critical, but it's not urgent, and it's hard for you to get to things that are not urgent. But I think we can do that.
County dollars at work outside of. Don't read the remain.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, your county dollars at work with a website. So people sort of remember the website, then they go home and it's what you've already done, which is, here's what we're doing, that would be great.
Oh, Ben.
Thank you, uh one of the things that I remember. It was that uh. Butler Pike and uh and Germantown intersection. There was controversy in the past that it could affect the archaeological place of the Underground Railroad. Do you have any update on that?
Yes, uh you're talking about Avalanche Hall.
Yes.
That was, I I'll link it to the plan.
Yeah, yeah, uh uh, oh, but I'll try to give you the the fifteen second answer. Um, there was uh when Habani wanted to develop uh the site next to Avalanche Hall, they had shown. A realignment of Butler Pike that would have gone through part of the property. Um, and they had put on their land development plans that it was be done by the county, but the county had never made any commitments to any of that, so. Um, having, people in the community haven't seen those land development plans, thought the county had a project to do it, county never did. Um, and then when we did Monco Pikes, you know, we we made it clear to uh McMahon, who did that study. That there would be no widening there, we didn't have any, we didn't really, the county doesn't have a project for it, doesn't have any engineering done. Really doesn't feel like picking up that foreignness, uh so even Monco Pike doesn't say the realignment. Uh, there there's really nothing out there in regards to actually doing that.
Okay, then. Short answer is, there will not be affection to the historical place, to the archaeological place.
That 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 there would not, it'll be, it it Monco Pike recommends uh pedestrian bicycle improvements to try to get some, there um some. ADA curb ramps in there, some better sidewalks, the village has no sidewalks, uh no bike lanes, that's what Monco Pike says about it, and there's no plans to. Do any type of roadway improvements other than maybe improve your signal sign.
Okay, it's very important, it's very important that especially that historical place. Uh should be respected.
Well, and it was recently permanently preserved, which is what I was thinking of, there was a a donor who stepped forward to. contributed a lot of the funding to purchase the property, um and there was. Community fundraising that also contributed, so that Avalanche Hall is now, I think. Legally and officially owned by White Marsh Township. Or maybe White Marsh Township in pro- in partnership with a nonprofit entity. Um, and rather than just a private owner who could sell it or develop it or do whatever, so. Um, two pieces of good news about Avalanche Mall.
Very important, thank you, that is, I would, yeah, that is excellent, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Staff. Public on Monco Pikes, just one quick question, are, will the finding or the recommendations somehow be coordinated with G I S? So that they're picked up by anybody looking through county's G I S program?
And we can, we can have that internal conversation, a lot of the G I S stuff, Steve resides with Roads and Bridges. So we have to work with them to figure out how to put things up, we definitely anticipate that this will be a guy for internal discussions. Right, that's why we did Monco Pikes was because as Tom was alluding to, uh Road and Bridges, you know, did a job for many years, just. Repaving things, uh but under Tom's leadership, the last couple of years, uh Roads and Bridges really looked to take a much more proactive stance. In terms of how our roads work and operate and not just simply repaving every couple of years, but making lots of improvements in Monco Pike. Was the way for us to finally make some some progress on that, sit down, have ideas, have things, uh be able to prioritize things, talk about it. So we haven't had any conversation with G I S yet, but that's not the same as you can't go forward.
As Susan said, it's definitely on Roads and Bridges radar anytime something is coming along in those areas. From how it's integrated into planning side of G I S things, it's it's going to be part of. As much as we can, our ongoing reviews of land development and then any future transportation infrastructure inventory items that we have, it will certainly be part of those. Um, how collections and um collections.
Parts of coordination that we need to do is with the townships because. Montgomery County doesn't maintain um signals. Or lights, we we don't, we don't do that. So it's a local entity that would have to upgrade their uh signals.
Remember, it's not just that they don't maintain, municipalities in Pennsylvania owe the signals, so the county.
It doesn't. Even though it's recommended that we're gonna. Let's look at these lights and the timing, it becomes now coordination issue with the township to discuss. That upgrade and then who's gonna fund that upgrade, so I guess we're thinking about funding some of it. Since it's in our study, uh but the actual um. Installation and maintenance would be the uh local township or the state, you know, as it may be. As it may be, but yeah, a lot of it says single improvements. Uh, and um, that's a coordination thing in order to need to work with counties.
Does Roads and Bridges use G I S, the county G I S system?
The county G I S is run by Dave Wong.
No, 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 it's not the question I asked.
I'm sorry.
Does Roads and Bridge Bridges refer to or use the G I S system?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, and I assume, do you refer to that during the U G, the H O P process?
Yes.
So wouldn't it be? Advantages to have the information from Monco Pikes or the recommendations, at least notations in there in the intersection, so that when the H O Ps come up, if it's something that can be incorporated. In that O G H O P process or the work that's being happen happening is coordinated and it's not just relying on going to a book.
Engineering design is the first step, I think, in uh implementing Monco Pikes. A commitment to a design would be um what I would push for. Uh, and then commitment resources for design. And then once we have the designs, they'll get prioritized based on um finance and schedules and other issues, but. Yeah, we've had initial discussions and planning uh about improving things. Uh, we talked about putting end lines on all of our roads so that people could have a border uh to look at. Uh, that's gonna be put in effect, we're gonna likely put in. Rimmer lines everywhere that have glass speed down, people can uh see the lines. And then we'll work to see how much room we have, put a bike lane in, uh the idea is to find out what you have first and where everything is. Um, either how the railways change daily, so. Uh, it's uh, it's an ongoing living thing that we're dealing with when these um projects.
Steve, if it makes the most sense for it to get integrated into the G I S or for Roads and Bridges, then we can certainly work through our G I S department.
It'll give you the G I S location and tell you information about the bridge. So yeah, we're set up and in our website, the G I F for our bridge location, so. There are all kinds of that, and our H O P guys right here, Phil Berger, uh my. Keeper attending, making sure he hears everything that's going on here today, with respect to anything I may have offered with fixing potholes. Uh, whatever else could be a whole week too, uh it's gonna be his job, so.
Any other uh comments or, thank you, any other comments or questions? Great. Appreciate it, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Next up is Lower Gwinnett, community planning update. Morning Claire, morning Anne, are we? Speaking of Sunny Town Pike. So I tied that together. I know, I'm proud of Claire, Claire. Lower Gwinnett, is this the first time we've had a?
Yeah, yes, it is, so.
Two hours.
See, good morning, everyone. Um, I am here with. Anne Nygaard, we are the community planners working with Lower Gwinnett Township on. Their new community planning assistance contract, which began in September. Um, it goes through August twenty twenty-five. Uh, like he says, a new community planning contract, so we don't have any uh old. Products to to update you on, but we can give a little overview of the township and what is upcoming. So uh Lower Gwinnett is kind of in the center east part of the county, it's bordered by six municipalities as. It's bordered by six municipalities, as we saw earlier in the presentation. Sommetown Pike goes through Lower Gwinnett, um, Witpane to the south, Montgomery Township and Horsham to the north, Upper Dedland, Ambler. Are sharing the eastern border and Upper Gwinnett is located to the west of the township. And there's a five-person board of supervisors. And their population, um, twenty twenty, in twenty twenty was about twelve thousand and of note, it's. That twelve thousand is about the same as the projected twenty thirty population from D V R P C's data. Um, so just looking back at the growth over the past thirty years or so. Um, there's been a lot of new residential development that have come in and a lot of new residents, so. Um, in a couple of slides, I'll show the the land use and how that's, um. How that, how the makeup is today. The median age is about fifty, just under fifty years old, which is a little bit older than the county as a whole. And the median household income is just over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, so that also is a little bit higher than the the county as a whole. And that might in part be due to the fact that there are a few significant, um, retirement communities located in the township. Again, showing the, in the town, in the land use. In the land use map in just a moment. So Lower Gwinnett is also, uh, part of the Wissahican Water Quality. Land, um, and it's located in the Wissahican Water, Wissahican Creek Watershed. And you can see here in this map that it's taken from, um, North Wales, just to. To illustrate how much of the township is located within the Wissahican Creek Watershed, and that plays a really important role for. Um, the township and their development goals going forward. Okay, so the existing land use in, um, in Lower Gwinnett is predominantly residential, the yellow is residential. About fifty-five percent of the township is, uh, residential use of all types, but primarily single-family detached. Um, institutional uses are the light blue. Um, and make up another big chunk, and that also constitutes the, um. The, um, folkways and other retirement communities that are in the township, and that makes up about. Twelve percent of the land use, so it's a pretty big chunk of the, of the township. Um, the purple shows in. Industrial uses, and we'll speak to that in a minute too, with with the comprehensive plan going forward. Um, and Bethlehem Pike, which runs this way. Anyway, um, Bethlehem Pike is the main commercial corridor, which is made up of retail, office, mixed uses. And that's where Spring House is and the, and the township, um, is township building is located there.
And Claire, this is land use, not necessarily zoning.
Right, that's just the land use. Um, and one more thing of note, since I mentioned the Wissahican Creek Watershed, is that, um. Twenty-one percent approximately is privately owned open space, which is mostly owned by. Um, natural lands and Wissahican trails. And and it's located kind of throughout the township, but. That kind of corresponds with the Wissahican Creek that goes through there. So the upcoming work program. Um, the comprehensive plan is is the, is the main focus for this, um, contract period. Um, we have just met with them for the first time in January, Anne and I, working with the steering committee. Um, and part of that, um, comprehensive plan project is the focus area study. And that Anne will speak on in in just a few slides for two properties that are circled here. In, um, in black, and I must say the labels are mixed up, but one is, um, located at. Twelve oh one Sommetown Pike, another one at seven twenty seven Norristown Pike. Um, these are two large properties that make up. Anne has the exact number for what the percentage of the township, um, this makes up. And for land use and and, um, they're big important employment possible centers, Anne was featuring.
And the one that's labeled A.
Is on Sommetown.
Coming town.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the one that Gwin Mercy just sold off.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so for the, I'm gonna hand this over to Anne. Um, the comprehensive plan was last updated in two thousand, and some of the key priorities that were listed in that were. Open space, neighborhoods, um.
And the redevelopment of Bethlehem Pike as a unified town center sort of feel, rather than. Sporadic development a lot throughout.
They've been trying to do that for years.
They have, and I am going to actually talk about. Some of the improvements that have been made since the two thousand comprehensive plan. However, in meeting with the township so far, we have already identified that open space and neighborhood connections. Continue to be a major priority for the township. In addition to the focus areas, the beacon properties that Claire highlighted, and the Bethlehem Pike corridor. So, open space in two thousand, they identified one hundred and seventy-five acres for preserve. Preservation, not including pre-existing preserved lands. Since the two thousand comprehensive plan, they have. Preserved fifty-two percent of that acreage in conjunction with the Natural Lands Trust and the Wissahican Valley Watershed. Fourteen percent of that has been developed with some conservation involved. And eleven percent has been developed without any conservation of the land. And twenty-three percent of that pre-identified open space. Remains undeveloped and unprotected, and that twenty-three percent. Is what the township is talking about when they say they care about open space and want to be able to move on preserving it.
Is that one of the beacon properties, the twenty-three percent?
No, actually, it is not. It's a couple of farmlands that are still in active use and private ownership. That may continue being farms, may not, they. There's no agricultural easement, no conservation easement, nothing of the sort that we could identify. And then Bethlehem Pike was their second focus in their two thousand comprehensive plan. Since the comprehensive plan, they have put in sidewalks along the entire length of Bethlehem Pike. The two thousand comprehensive plan noted that. There was no choice for pedestrians to access multiple businesses at a time. And you can see here, the, between two thousand eight and two thousand sixteen, they put in sidewalks, they put in fencing. And some amount of landscaping to begin the process of unifying the corridor. So far, what we've heard as far as Bethlehem Pike is intensifying what is already improved, revisiting. That increased conjunction and making it a pleasant place to walk now. Where it is currently possible to walk. And then the beacon focus area study. So, for those who don't know, usually the focus area discussions occur near the end of the comprehensive plan process regarding areas that have. Come up frequently during topic discussions. In this case, we're putting the cart before the horse. However, we're putting the cart before, before the horse due to the Gwinnett Mercy selling. Due to Gwinnett Mercy selling off the property on the left, twelve oh one Sommetown Pike. Both of these properties have been industrial and researched since nineteen sixties, but they're now under the same ownership. Beacon Properties wishes to develop additional lab and medical research space on both of these properties. And they make up about five percent of the township's total acreage between them. So it's not a small landowner, not a small prospect, and the township wants to be able to. Identify what they want to ask of Beacon regarding these properties. So, we are currently brainstorming preliminary issues and goals and collecting as much data as we can. In order to identify the major themes and guiding planning principles that. And recommendations that we are going to bring to Beacon. And we at MCPC are going to, at some point, meet with Beacon regarding these properties. The township has asked that we do so, once we have a vision of what to request.
You get the sense that Be- Beacon wants a similar twelve oh one with where they're, want to incorporate like incubator. Incubator lab space and stuff like that.
What we've heard from the township is that. Beacon is mostly focusing on the existing innovator property at. Ship seventy-seven Norristown Road. The twelve oh one Sommetown Pike purchase was essentially, we're going to want this at some point, and we definitely don't want a competitor to purchase it. So plans for that are still a decade out, because the sense I've gotten. But now is the time to be planning when things are a decade out. The township has not even received preliminary plans for Sommetown Pike. But Bethlehem Pike is going to be the other focus area we have already identified. As you can see, the picture is on the top. And the left here shows some of the current conditions of older development, so strip development, undefined access. Even with the sidewalks that have been put in, it's. Not what we'd consider the inviting small town commercial corridor that. The township wants to be the center of it. And. Lot of curb cuts, yes. But you can see on the bottom right here, a new development that recent, recently went in further down the Pike. Mixed use, some retail in the front and townhouses in the back. Very well clustered to preserve green space, and that is what the township. Envisions thus far along Bethlehem Pike. And wants to ensure that that can be continued going forward. So. As Claire noted, the contract is not following the, uh, January first date we tend to prefer and try to keep. It's running from September first, twenty twenty-two, to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. At two point five planner days per month and twelve night meetings a year. That's split between Claire and I. And the contract costs are a total of seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. With fifty percent of that share go, coming from the municipality. Any questions?
I'm just, I'm just curious, uh, so first of all, it's great that we have this community. Um, but they are currently in a, with a temporary manager, an interim manager, so how, how did that conversation about. Getting a contract with the planning commission start?
The conversa- conversation started before they.
With a previous manager.
With the previous manager, and it was initiated by the Board of Supervisors, not by the manager. So, there has been continuity of people discussing the contract.
Okay, great. Our first call was from the, the chair of supervisors.
Was it, I actually had a conversation with her to start.
How often does that happen, where, where the elected officials reach out to the planning commission versus the, uh, staff?
Not often, it typically runs through the manager, it's about all cases.
There was tension there.
Yes, there was a changeover. Yeah, there was a changeover there.
There's a burden.
There were reasons for that.
Yeah, there was like, there was legacy, um, staff, there was some place and there was some. Tension going on there. I mean, Lower Gwinnett, traditionally always been. Kind of like a medieval town, they did whatever they wanted, they did what they wanted to do within, and nobody did what they were doing. There's a couple of those.
Isn't that part of the. To that point, you know, I think you had said that they haven't updated their comprehensive plan since two thousand. So clearly, you know, they recognized that they were behind the ball.
Yeah, and they, they seem really excited about, about doing this.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a long-term assistant manager, um, who's still there, and, uh, we've worked with it, all in that whole interim process.
That's great. Who's that?
Um, Allison? Yeah, Jeff, last name's Jamie, Jamie.
Jamie Warman.
I, I know all the names, I sometimes.
Any other questions? Why, why the two of you? Just out of curiosity.
Ah, that's a question for Eric.
You're, why the two?
Um, that's just a strategy we've been implementing with the comprehensive plan, just because of their size and. Yeah, so you've been trying to add second in every, every community working on a comprehensive plan.
Okay.
It's a little bit of mentorship too.
Yes. I'm just curious.
Works well.
That's worth a lot of, anyway.
Wait, 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 any other questions? Open, Bob, Phil?
No questions, thank you.
No, no questions, um, perhaps the only thing that. The impression on Lower Gwinnett is that actually there is a good preservation space.
Yes.
And, yeah, and, I mean, driving there, being there in the parks. You have that sense, no, that is a balance site, no? And having these large properties unprotected. Uh, you've made me think, no? Is there anything that can be done in order to protect land?
Oh, I think at this point, it's probably not. Going to, to happen, and we're the two focus properties now, but they have, they do have a trail. Constructed on the former GMU site that the. That Beacon Properties has agreed to maintain. So they are maintaining the wood, wooded area on the western edge of the property. And also going forward with the comp plan, um, I think one of the priorities is to get ahead of the game for preservation of. Other open space that exists in the township that's public and, and really, um. Find opportunities to purchase that when possible and, and, and keep that open space whenever they can, within the township hands.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? Forgot, uh, so we got medium housing prices?
Yes.
Simon and Stan?
I'll distribute this.
I can take it. I was just gonna ask if one of you.
Yes. Anne's letting you go solo? I guess so. I was just gonna say, we're getting tired of seeing Anne also. Seems like every month Anne has to have a, every January.
This week, featuring Anne.
We traded off the ends this month.
Yeah.
Hey, hello, everyone. I'm Simon Bernard. I'll be presenting the twenty twenty-two update for the median housing price report in Montgomery County. So, overall, in twenty twenty-two, there were a total of eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five market rate sales of homes. With median price of four hundred thousand dollars. That is for all housing types, um, existing and new units together. This is unfortunately an increase of thirty thousand dollars from twenty twenty-one's median home price of thirty hundred, uh, and seventy thousand. Even though there was a decrease in the total overall sales during this time. In twenty twenty-one, there was a twelve thousand, uh, eight hundred and seventy market rate sales, which was the highest over the last.
So that's not single-family homes, that's all.
Well.
Um, new homes saw a significant median home price increase of over twenty-eight percent. Uh, the median price for a newly, newly built unit is six hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and five. It's a little terrifying, um. While there was also an increase in the median home price of existing units, it was only an increase of eight point five percent. For the median cost.
Yeah, the great correction is going on.
That's right.
Yeah, wait, wait for the numbers next year.
So the correction is going on.
That's where you are.
It does.
Raising interest rates will bring these numbers down.
So, I hope so. Um, although.
But not necessarily solving the issues.
The, the existing median price, existing unit median price is three hundred and eighty-five thousand, so a little bit less terrifying, but still. High. Together, median prices rose, uh, for all types between eight percent and eleven point three percent, uh, from last year's numbers. Uh, and then, this is a chart kind of showing, comparing the percentages and numbers from the previous years. Uh, so you can see that while, uh, the median price as a whole grew thirty thousand. Each one grew pretty significantly, well, pretty steadily. Uh, eight percent for single-family detached, ten point three for single-family attached. And eleven point three for multi-family.
I mean, that's, you're, and that's like condos, that doesn't get into the rental income.
Yeah, this is not including any rental units, um, and that's actually why we think there's so much less in multi-family units being sold. Uh, just because most of them being built recently are rented.
Right.
So this is an interesting graph, it shows. So this is an interesting graph. It shows the median housing price. I'll just read what I wrote. The values in this chart represented by the gold line have been adjusted to twenty twenty two dollars. Using the Consumer Price Index for the Philadelphia Metropolitan Statistical Area. Uh, obtained from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Uh, the blue line represents the year's median price and the gold shading shows the difference of the adjustment, including the inflation rate that will follow. So basically, the blue is the median price for that year and the gold shows what it should, what it would be the following year. With the adjusted inflation uh number going to us. So it's higher consistently going through the years, but there's been periods of times where it's closer. Um, and they meet at the end because we don't have twenty twenty two's data yet. And feel free to jump in if you have any questions.
You will.
I take it back. Don't come back.
Yeah, it's like you should have said that.
That's why my son can't buy a house in November.
There you go. Hear it again and again and again.
All over, all over.
So this chart shows the last ten years of median housing prices by type. Um, you can see the last five years have had a significantly faster pace of of growth than the previous five years. This shows the total sales by type. Which is interesting because I I only called out last year's and this year, oh, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, uh, to show. Where we are really, but it's interesting because even though last year was the most sales we've had. Uh, the only actual increase between twenty twenty one and twenty two. Is the total sales in single family attached units, which might be showing a trend towards people preferring those units.
For being able to afford this.
For being able to afford those units yet.
That's that's the. The affordability.
Uh, so this is.
Do we have a, I'm sorry, do we have a sense of the single family attached or whether. They're more economical or the people buying them have more income.
We don't know about the people's income who are purchasing them, but um. Typically, they are cheaper than detached units.
They're what?
Cheaper. Uh, attached attached units are are less expensive.
The trend in the attached units is getting extremely expensive and being more on the luxury side. I mean.
Yes.
Units went up in price around twenty one.
Twenty four percent.
So.
The while they are more economical, um. Then that might be changing. Uh, so and these are just new units.
I would have actually thought. I would have thought that it was because the people buying attached homes are buying them in like, you know. Nicer new developments because it was a seller's market and these. Empty nesters are, you know, were selling their houses at the height of the market.
It's definitely.
And then using that as funds to go into, you know, attached homes where they have HOAs and.
Right, for for masters, luxury amenities.
Two attached units that sold last year, only three hundred and eighty five new units.
A popular type.
Sales. Existing homes.
Right, they make they're they are a huge percent of the existing homes that sell, but if you're looking for a new unit. It's just not that much to choose.
Or how many were actually built versus how many were sold. Best to come.
But he needs another meeting. We haven't done.
Yes, yes, I don't have the data.
Hold on to this. You can compare the numbers. Mother two.
We have that problem with John sometimes he jumps in. He has a question for.
I'm gonna take it for that.
So, uh, I guess I'll let you go. Let's take in these terrifying numbers. Overall, new units, um, there was a twenty eight point eight percent growth in the median housing price. Um, with a decrease in the actual number of sales. For a single family detached unit, a new single family detached unit, the price grew thirty seven percent to eight hundred and forty three thousand eight hundred and thirty two.
Really, truly? Eight hundred and forty three thousand something?
Yep.
Maybe, I know.
It's a it's a smaller group and you look, I I died into Simon's work sheets yesterday without his knowledge, probably. I was like, restart, like, is there any way like I could be right, that this is right, and it is. Um, but you see all those developments that have come in that are like one point six million dollars.
Yeah, there's a there's a lot that are were two million.
For crap, too.
I'd only mention those, but but building centers. My family attacked it, similarly grew a significant amount. And you can see twenty twenty one is not very fair.
Yeah, so my wife would like to downsize from our five bedroom house into something as a first floor bedroom and blah blah blah. They're more expensive than what we can tell. I'm like, honey, we're gonna have to put money into this. We're not downsizing. We're sort of going to close. We're juryating in a smaller place.
You want to downsize responsibility.
How did that conversation go?
Uh, not well. This median income didn't go on twenty eight point eight percent.
No, you know.
We're all laughing. These are really, really serious issues.
Yes, that's all. Um, so there are asterisks there for multifamily, just because, um, like I said earlier, there haven't been new units that were sold. They're being built, but most of them are for rent or or uh not being sold as condos. Um, and then this shows the new units, uh, median housing price, uh, broken down by type. Uh, again, multifamily is kind of uh non-existent for a couple of years just because there's either. No units being sold or there wasn't enough uh sales to to show up. Uh, but you can see again, the last couple of years, this is just jumping up. Uh, especially single family detached. And then existing units, a little bit softer uh of numbers to to consume. You can see that the median price for all existing units is three hundred and eighty five thousand. Uh, same then it's detached while still high is four hundred and fifty nine thousand four hundred and fifty. Uh, a little bit lower than the new units. Uh, attached units, three hundred and two, some seven hundred and fifty. Um, and multifamily, two hundred and twenty two, five hundred. Uh, so. They're still all growing significantly and steadily. Well, this is a map showing all sixty two municipalities in the county um by their median price. Uh, the darker the color, the higher the median price, uh, the lighter the color, the lower the median price. And they're grouped in categories from one hundred thousand to five hundred thousand plus. You can see, uh, Lower Marion, obviously darker, uh, Lower Gwinnett. Um, or Sister, those are the darkest of the communities and lighter is. Uh, West Pots Grove, Pottstown and Norristown. Uh, this is an interesting chart showing the uh. Northeast of the United States and then our little metropolitan statistical area, uh, showing the nine counties, the DBR PC region. So between twenty twenty one, twenty two, uh, the price change for our county was about percent. The surrounding counties are pretty similar, uh, except for Philadelphia because they have a lot more um. Buried home types, I guess, and a lot more units, a lot more people. Um, in the U S as a whole, it was three hundred and ninety two thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, an increase of eleven point nine percent in twenty twenty two. The northeast region was four hundred and twenty six thousand dollars, and that's the the larger map on the bottom here. Uh, which is an increase of eight point nine percent. So it's pretty similar. We're following a various similar trend to the northeast region. This map shows the affordability index um of our county, uh, which is mapping the um median house. With uh median house price year over year. So the. Larger the number, the less affordable of units, the lower the number, the more. It's gone down a little bit, but in recent years is becoming more uh less and less affordable. Uh, for lower and middle income families to uh uh purchase homes in our county. To kind of hammer down on that.
Is there some correlation between that and getting a mortgage? You know what I mean? Like the mortgage companies look at some index here and say you can qualify for a mortgage for that home or not.
I am not sure. If I, with my understanding, they look at your income as a whole, how long you've been there. Know that we have a first uh time home buyer program. And typically, uh. Give award those to, I don't, we don't award them, but I know they're awarded to people at lower incomes.
I think there's a direct correlation built in, but there's probably more complex things that they do do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure they use credit score and things like that, but to look at income and what you can afford and. Seems like that's an in debt that tracks that as well. That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, this doesn't track um who's getting mortgages. This is just saying this is the state of uh home prices and affordability of our of our region.
I think the issue is, yeah, somebody at the median income today. Trying to get the median value house probably has a much tougher time getting mortgages than when that number was lower ten years ago.
I'm sure. I was just wondering if there's a cuddle where. All of a sudden, median can buy median.
What's the formula? Do you know?
Hmm, yeah, it's um, so it's the median household income divided by the median house.
First. Larger than, larger than gap between those two, the bigger the.
And median household income divided by the median.
It's the price divided by.
I was just saying, it can't be that.
Price divided by. So, but what's that?
Income.
Right.
Yeah, it makes more.
So it's it's the what Scott just said, when the, when the prices of houses go up. To an extreme like we're seeing now, but the median income stays relatively the same, that gap, that gap gets bigger.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right now, the median home price is almost four times what the median income is annually. So.
Yes.
Right, and so the last time that happened was during the ball.
Right.
Before the.
Exactly. That's that's encouraging.
Well, there's a lot of reports.
Yeah, there there are.
Been coming for the last three years.
So to kind of hammer down the affordability index. Uh, this is a map provided by the PA State Data Center, uh, showing the affordability. Uh, or I guess the median household income of black households in comparison to white households. In Montgomery County, the median household income of black households is only sixty seven percent of that of white households. Or sixty nine thousand two hundred and two dollars compared to one hundred and three thousand five hundred and eighty seven. There were a number of counties that did not have data for this, so those are the grayed out areas. Uh, the darker the red, the higher the disparity, and blue signifies a county where black households have a greater median household income. Uh, than white households, and unfortunately, that is only like.
Has to be Pike County.
Say that again?
There's only one county in the state that has a a. What were black households have a higher income than white households.
A lot of people that work in New York City and around that area that live there and commute. Because they bought in, and I'm sure it's still more affordable than other areas, certainly than the New York City area or. Where people typically live uh that work in New York City, but they've moved into that Poconos region. And are commuting um largely because of the home prices and affordability.
Even northern Jersey, some.
Correct, northern Jersey also. They're just. So that metropolitan area really.
And taxes.
Over that area.
And the taxes and.
And taxes, yes, all the benefits, all the financial benefits. So that makes sense.
So summarize, um, median house, housing prices in twenty twenty two increased by eight point one percent overall. Uh, the number of market rate sales uh during that time decreased by seven percent. Existing unit median prices exist uh increased by eight point five percent and new units increased by twenty eight percent. The most expensive communities in the county are Lower Marion, Warsester and Lower Gwinnett. And least expensive are Norristown, Pottstown and West Pots Grove. Any questions?
Any questions for Simon?
Only positive. Comment.
Yeah.
Only positive.
Hopeful for twenty twenty three, but news.
It is what it is, and you need to look at other metro areas where people are living, whether it's. Washington, New York, I just came back from LA, I won't even, I mean. We have. In the world of what's affordable, they're very, 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 very expensive, but they're not as expensive as a lot of other places.
True, it could be worse.
I mean, it's not unexpected.
And the other thing is where we live, we have very expensive homes, but we have good schools. Which is very different than some of these places.
Yeah, I mean, it's a perfect storm. I had a pandemic, shut everything down, slow to get supplies back up. Economy heated up quickly, government put a boatload of money into the system, there's low labor. I mean, it's not unexpected.
I I think it's, what's interesting is I think this information here supports. The conversations that are happening at the municipal level about changing zoning. For providing opportunities for more affordable housing.
That's right.
Uh, within the the ranks of existing zoning. I know we're having them.
Yeah.
Right now. And I know my colleagues are in several different municipalities, right?
Problem is then you get into that fine line of supporting more development and sure more congestion, so.
Yeah, it's a challenging conversation, but sure, but this is why.
Yeah. Got it. Uh, Obed?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I am thinking. Because here the situation of uh. Affordable housing is not clear, no, uh, what has been the development or the increase of affordable housing? There was not a data that was shared. Second, we can, the comparison between the median household. Uh, between the white community and the black communities is, I mean, is the difference is. Is 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 tremendously, the gap is big, no? That tells us, and and here this lot, this is 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 light. In which the most expensive median price is Lower Marion, Warsesters, Lower Gwinnett. The least expensive is Norristown, Posttown, West Post Grove. Uh, 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 it's interesting, the less expect expensive is where the minorities we are, no? Uh, uh, and therefore there is really no expectation. Now, now, and also, those are the communities. Where the school district they struggle more, where there is less income uh for those school districts. And uh. And therefore there is a an element here. Of very non-existent mobility. For many of of these communities to aspire in the future. To a better situation or to a better housing. I am just thinking how we are seeing that this will change in the next or twenty years. Are we seeing that in the next ten, twenty years, this will be exactly the picture? Or there will be more gap? Or what will be the situation? Or what we are doing and thinking. In the in the capacity of affordable housing, increasing the ownership of minorities for house. And then to think in a mobility on this, no? Um, these are questions that are in my mind, because I see now a pattern during the last five years, very similar. And I don't see change. Uh, it's growing.
Daunting. Uh, Jill, Bob, anything?
I just, I agree with what's been said. Definitely challenging.
Alright, thanks, Simon. Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Thanks, um.
Switch gears to the opposite, opposite end of the spectrum and calling Steve through the farm land. Switch gears to the opposite, opposite end of the spectrum and calling Steve through the farmland. Preservation Program. That's where we can build new houses, Steve.
Hello, everyone, this is the annual summary, uh, for the Montgomery County Farmland Preservation Program for the year twenty twenty two. For those that might not know, a couple of board, new board members, Jonathan, I know you know what it is. Uh, but the program we're committed to preserving a permanent agricultural land base and maintaining an environment that supports a viable farm economy. Farmland is preserved through the voluntary sale of a property's development rights of perpetuity. Uh, the program was accepted in nineteen ninety and today has preserved ten thousand four hundred and fifty seven acres on one hundred and eighty five farms. We had seven farms go to settlement last year. Um, and because of that, all twenty twenty, all twenty twenty applicants and three of the four twenty twenty one applicants that we made offers to. Have now been preserved and the remaining twenty twenty one applicant should be preserved by the end of this month.
The wrong is quite a.
Yes. Uh, here we have a map basically just depicting, um, all the preserved farms, the farms in their local ISAs. And then the blue polygons are representing the seven farms preserved last year. Uh, and those seven farms totaled two hundred and thirty one acres.
The eastmost farm.
Maybleakers all the way down here, we are also in process. Yeah, right there, Maybleakers. Um, we're actually just added an agreement of sale with one in Horsum right here, um, which I'll get to in a little bit. Um, but that was a nice, it's a nice preservation effort as well.
And then there's one on two oh two, Mascarelli, or, and I published. A big one, um, the Roth Farm up there on two or two. Yeah.
Hancock and.
Yeah, right, that was to the eastern, that was a big one, eastern, many years ago.
That was part of the college, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, now.
Yeah, they have good parcels preserved.
It was Roth, Roth family.
Yeah.
So speaking of those seven farms that we preserved last year, uh, we'll start with the A F C farm in Lower Frederick. Uh, this was thirty six acres preserved, this is adjacent to an already preserved farm here off to the northeast. Um, and that's a corn and soybean oper- operation. Uh, they chase a Litchinor Farm in Southford, this is seventy six acres that was preserved. Part of the farm is actually located in Bucks County, which is this whole top parcel here. This is County Leiden Road, uh, by second to parcels. Um, this is a corn and soybean operation, they also have some personal horses on the property. Which they're looking to expand in the next couple of years and allow public boarding and possibly some lessons.
We just did the Montgomery County side, so we do.
Now, we preserve both, but since their home was in Montgomery County, it's our farm rather than Bucks.
And we can do it across.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so seventy six acres in total. Yeah, and then they're also exploring options to convert part of their farm into, uh, Christmas trees as well. Uh, the Black Family Trust Farm, this is located, uh, right on the Skipback Pike in Skipback, this was forty four acres preserved. And they raise cattle, sheep and goats for sale, uh, and they also have a pet cremation service as well. And, uh, we actually did use that, my wife and I, and I will say that they, uh, they do an incredible job, so, yeah. They, they do, uh, do mulching, but that part of the property was not preserved, it was excluded. Uh, this is the Scott and Sharon Melanson number two farm in Franconia, twenty six acres were preserved. Uh, this is adjacent to the rest of their preserved farm, which is down here, uh, across the street, this is Ruth Road right here. And they're also adjacent to the Dehaven Farm, which is, uh, to the north of them. Uh, they grow corn and soybeans and also hay on this backfield here, and just a little fun fact about this farm. Uh, they have a flock of purple martins, uh, that migrate to their farm every year. And they're actually due to migrate in the next couple of weeks, they come all the way from Brazil. Um, and they stay from about mid-March to the end of August and then fly down to, uh, back to South America for the winter. And that's just a close-up picture of what one looks like.
On the flyway?
Yeah, and they, uh, they have habitat for that, this, this year they have a handful of these.
That's also a good question, out of another.
I guess so.
You know, the bird is no just hot.
They actually put radio transmitter. And they can track where an individual bird goes from one place to another, because there's different stations along the. East Coast, Middle River and the West Coast. It's really pretty neat.
And they, they, they know, they, they can basically narrow it down within a week's range of when the bird should arrive. I don't think so, no, just. Just a very fascinating bird. Very beautiful sounding sound. Um, okay, so this is the Anna Barnes Spousal Trust Farm in Southford, this was only a ten acre. Uh, piece of land that was preserved, it's completely landlocked and surrounded by, uh, preserved farms already. Uh, and this is just a simple hay operation. The Gwyncket Farm in Upper Frederick, nineteen acres, and this is just an equine operation, boarding lessons. And finally, we have the new Goshenhopin Church number two farm in Upper Hanover, twenty acres were preserved here. Uh, this is adjacent to the rest of their farm, which is across the street here. And then, uh, they're also adjacent to township preserved land, the township owns.
Pretty cool what that church has done over the years and they are, they have a very, from my understanding. And the folks I've spoken to, they have a very active group of conservation people there that are just. Paying attention, trying to do the right thing, I mean, it's really wonderful.
Yeah, not only that, but the whole congregation as well, because they have to, uh. You know, they vote on this, the congregation does themselves these preservation efforts and it's always an overwhelming.
Telephone calls even this past year on, on things that they want to do.
Yes. Uh, and moving along here. Um, so also in twenty twenty, we received eighteen applications, sixteen were new and we had two reapplications. The farm board ended up presenting offers to seven of those farms with five of the farms accepting the offers. Uh, those farms are here, uh, Yerga number two, Frankenfield College Settlement of Philadelphia. Which is better known as, uh, Penny Pack, um, that's the one in Horsum and then Renninger.
Yeah.
Yeah, my wife was just there.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's just, uh, the one sliver of land along Van Road, it is, it's about thirty five acres. Penny pack leases that land from them for their C S A.
Yeah, she was just there for her school, they do an outdoor.
Agrees. That's great. Uh, those five farms, they're expected to be preserved this year of the total of one hundred and sixty acres, and this is just a map. Uh, representing the five farms that accepted our offers, pink polygons are all of the twenty twenty three applicants. And then the green are the primarily preserved. And speaking of the twenty twenty three round, uh, we just had a pretty busy start to the year, we had sixteen applicants. In ten different townships, uh, which in my opinion was really great, it was a really spread out year. Um, it wasn't, um, you know, just in Douglas, New Hanover, Upper Hanover, it's pretty spread out, we have two with our Pots Grove down here. One all the way out in Half Field Township, so, you know, in terms of location, we had a pretty wide range of farms come in this year. Um, we had one eighty five acre farm, one sixty plus acre farm, one fifty plus acre farm.
Pretty good size.
Two forty plus acre farms as well. And this is also following up a very strong twenty twenty two where we saw the missed applicants in twenty years.
Why do you think that is?
Um, I don't know, I mean, we're, we're doing a lot of outreach for sure.
It's generational, I think the. I'm not sure, it'd be interesting if these are older farmers, because the average age of our farmers, when we looked at it a number of years ago, the last time I heard it. Was up there, it's interesting that their children. Now, who may be coming into decisions, even though their parents might not have done it, they are making, I'm not, I'm just surmising, making the decision. To move forward or maybe sometimes new owners.
Do you have a sense of why there's an increase?
Um, a- again, just really just the outreach, and then I think a lot of our landowners as well now, um, they don't even farm themselves, they're just coming in and buying the property and then. Preserving it and they just leased their land out to farmers, so I think we're seeing an influx of that as well, just people coming in and buying the property. Uh, preserving it and then leasing it out to farmers. And then maybe just the overall economy.
Are like a second career for them, they, they made their money elsewhere. That one big in property was recently purchased by. Uh, that local vet didn't want to see the land get sold.
Which one is that? Which one's that?
Um, the eighty five acre one and.
Upper Frederick. Uh, this one right here.
Which vet, I mean, the vets are very, usually very constipated.
I get the sense of that they're being preserved because there's limited other uses for those properties and they're.
Uh, no, I think the overall sense, honestly, they're being preserved, especially the ones that are farmer-owned and not, you know, just an outside landowner. It's just the love of the land and they just want to see their farm preserved.
I get that, I thought about the other aspects, the other parts of it, or the other purchases.
So, so an existing farmer can get money out of his land without selling his land. And so his heirs may not be interested in farming, but they like the cash in the land. So we can provide them cash, the land stays in the family, and then it might be rented out to the farmers down the road. Sometimes landowners can commit, have people come in, buy the farm for X. So the development right for X minus a little bit. And so now they've only got a little bit into that land and they own twenty acres or whatever, and they. They put one house on there, which might be where they want to live, and they rented out, uh.
At least it out. And now it's at a reduced value in case we have newer farmers. Who couldn't buy it at the higher appraised for development price and may be able to continue, may be able to continue farming or. Do something innovative.
I think the worry that, when I was on the farm, we worried was always two-fold. One, do we have young farmers coming in who are going to farm this land, because it needs to be farmed. And two, corollary of that, it needs to be farmed, it can't be fallow, it can't be open space, it can't be.
It's a production, it's. Active agriculture, which.
Always been my worry for decades beyond when we, when we preserve.
Steve, were any of these part of, uh, estate sale or anything like that?
With a family just wants to get it to somebody that will, we can farm it. I haven't come across that yet.
But a lot of them are adjacent.
Yeah, that was always.
A lot of them are adjacent, it did, that looked like in your first, one of your, your first slides. I think, less or not?
Oh, you, you mean all the preserved farms, yes, yeah, we certainly have a cluster in, uh, Douglas here, Upper Hanover up here. Um, and then New Hanover as well, you know, we kind of have our significant farmland area. Um, in the county and, uh, you know, you can kind of see where that area. Bringing back good memories? Okay, so here's just a couple of figures. Um, at the end of twenty twenty two in P A and Montgomery County, obviously not much has changed from last year to this year. Of course, everything increased, the amount of money, uh, put forth towards preservation efforts, the amount of acres and farms that have been preserved. Um, last year in twenty twenty one, P A finally made it over six hundred thousand preserved acres. And in twenty twenty two, um, they finally surpassed six thousand farms. Um, so kind of two back-to-back milestones for the state of Pennsylvania, who is the leading state in the nation when it comes to farmland. Um, and this here, this map here is, um, a little bit messy, but what I wanted to represent here. Um, again, the green polygons are all apparently preserved farms, the pink polygons are our twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three applicants. And then the yellow polygons are subdivision land development proposals that have come into the planning commission in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. And the reason I did this is because you can see that there is somewhat of a sprawl out into these more rural neighborhoods into Douglas into New Hanover. Um, not only backing up right to our already preserved farms, but to applicants as well. Um, you can see this is one of our current applicants in twenty twenty three here, um, and there is a. Whole town center proposed right across the street from them, um, you know, so it's kind of just highlighting the urgency of this. Program still, uh, to go out and preserve these farms before they, you know, continue into town centers and other big residential or. Not residential developments.
Would you came first, the land development application or the application for the preservation?
Uh, the land development. Uh, and then just some events and outreach in twenty twenty two, I gave a presentation at the Schrangfelder Library. I gave a presentation for the Friends of Worcester, uh, again, outdoor inspections all through the summer and the fall. Constantly trying to promote the program, gain more interest, uh, and then we also had this farmers networking event in August. Uh, this was primarily because we had to keep canceling our Keep Farming Conference the past few years because of COVID, so this was. Kind of just a morale booster for the farming community, kind of get them back out into the public. Um, you know, get them together, get them networking again, and we had, uh, over seventy five attendees show up at some point, it was kind of an open event from five to seven thirty P M. They could come whenever they wanted to, we provided food, beverages, things like that. Um, and it was really just a networking event, uh, information, you know, was handed out and everything. So we had preserved farm owners there, non-preserved farm owners, other just interested parties. Uh, so it was pretty successful, we got a lot of positive feedback, not only from the attendees, but, uh, members of the Farm Bureau as well. Um, so we're going to explore options to hold another one this year or something similar at least.
A knob cocktail cocktail thing.
Yeah, pretty much. Um, and then, of course, we already have more planned for twenty twenty three, and just a quick thanks to, uh, Scott, Eric. Uh, Donna and Patty for helping out with this event, um, certainly much appreciated.
Steve, you're doing a great job with this, this program, I mean, it's, you professionalize kind of the data information. That is really helpful and. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any questions for Steve?
I still have this one more. This is actually, or was going to be my most favorite slide, but I'm not sure what happened. Uh, to the map here, unfortunately, but there's a few upcoming projects and events I'm working on, of course, every year we send out about two newsletters. Um, in a couple of years, we have our program guidebook that needs to be updated, so, you know, we'll go through that and revise it if needed. Um, again, I just mentioned the farmers gathering, uh, that will potentially be holding. Um, and then I'm also putting together this agritourism map, which was supposed to show up here, but I'm not sure if there's permission issues. For whatever reason, um, because this is not what it's supposed to look like, but what the agritourism map is supposed to be. Um, we basically have a hard copy of our county and all of the farms. Farm stands, farm markets, things like that highlighted, so what I just want to do is digitize that into a map that I can, uh, send to the public. And what it'll be is will be an interactive G I S map, and there'll be polygons or some type of dots placed throughout. The county of the locations of the farms, farmers' markets, whatever, and when you click the dot, it'll bring up all the information for that farm you need, so for instance. Merrymead Farm, if you were to click on that, you could see the location, the contact information, website, the hours. Activities they offer, whether it be hay riding, pumpkin picking, Christmas trees, things like that. Um, so, you know, basically just trying to bring the economy into Montgomery County, keep it in Montgomery County, keep it local, especially. You know, try to get more tourism to these farms that are, you know, somewhat lacking it. Um, and then also the hope is to make this bilingual as well with the map, so make it available to the Hispanic community. Because a large part of that community. Um, because a large part of that community.
And it's nice to be able to know where you can get fresh food for these farm stands for families and do it easily.
Yeah, so now Steve. That's how you do it, sorry.
Any questions for Steve?
I just have one, she sometimes when I drive around the county, I think I'm very proud of the, the farm that we save. Some of the signs are rolling over. It it's not a good, look, it's not a good look.
Yeah, the 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 signs, it's kind of an ongoing, uh, project for us and Anne can probably speak on it a little more than I could, she's. Kind of the lead for the signs right now, but it's a whole process, you have to go through permitting. Uh, to get the new ones installed at least, for the old ones, I'm not sure, I know we have to go out and either fix them or rip them up and maybe get a new permit to put a new one in.
A new type of sign.
A stash of signs at the, uh, park facility in Mealy Park, it's a matter of me finding the time to. Go out and double check if it's broken or missing or has a gun hole through it, but I mean it all.
Have much nicer signs than we do. And some of the county preserved open space signs look much better than the farmland signs. So I don't know.
It's part of the whole communication issue for the county.
Right, we we keep coming back to that, don't we? So, whatever, I mean, just if you have the time or something, have the budget. To go out and take a look at the signs and perhaps improve them in a way that we.
So many agenda items. No, it's just a, that's a, it's a good point and you mentioned the open space, so we should look into what they're doing, if they're doing something right or have. Uh, uh, an avenue set we could tie into, what we can't do is what Anne used to do because of the amount of time she did spend and had back then. We just, there's no way we're ever gonna have it, so we either outsource this or integrate it into other processes, either of which might be the answer.
Could we intern this? Is this, uh, it seems pretty concrete.
It is not hard to do, it's just.
That's what I'm saying, it would be an intern project to go out. Oh, you've got to manage the interns, I see it in your face.
It's truly just finding the time.
Right.
And and we rely, uh, and it's not, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, we rely on our park staff. To have the spare time.
I've heard that hardly short staff they are, so this is.
I think there's a strong case to be made though about, okay, budget time, let's talk, it it takes this much to outsource this and what is it, it's worth it, we think it's worth it. The inter, you know, our program budget might be applied for it.
The intern project would be working with GIS and locating all the signs.
Yes, right.
So that you have a record of where they are.
Right.
That you can then go back and then deal with.
Create a program, right. Oh, I think the intern could also get in the car and drive there.
Well, I think, I think taking that initial inventory, if you are going to outsource it, I think you would want to have a really good sense for what you were working with today. And that could be part of that internship program is geolocating and documenting current conditions.
That sounds like something to be attracted to.
That's what we did for all of our, all of our interns, interns over the summer, and it took, it took a while, it takes years. To document that stuff, but you, at the end of the project, you have location to rendition photo.
Any questions on Jill, I think Bob left, go bed, anybody?
Very nice job.
Yeah, good report, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the report, no questions on my side.
Thank you.
Alrighty, right on schedule. It's not working, but it's right on schedule.
Director report.
I'm the big winner today, exactly like this has ever happened. Don't feel like you have to use the whole. Oh, I'm gone. Sure, Anne will come up with another agenda item that she wants to fit in today. Uh, I'll cover this in just a second, right on that. What is up? A bit, so I'm gonna highlight one event, we'll cover events at the end, but this one's a big one, the Chester Valley Trail Ribbon Cutting is a week, it's Monday, March thirteenth. Uh, eleven A M, uh, all of you are invited, if you have the time, are welcome, uh, I think we have a, uh. In our RSVP list of, of a hundred and thirty or so, uh, right now, so it's definitely been popular. Maybe even a one contingent of that is going to come in on their bikes and maybe, uh, you can coordinate a little, uh. Flash mob bike ride through the, through the event. Um, so, uh, again, that, and that is at the, that's quite described the location is where the. Four mile extension started and hooks up with the existing Chester Valley Trail, which you probably will sell now, because they're integrated. But it's, uh, behind the King of Prussia DMV off of South Gulf Road, King of Prussia Road, if you're familiar with the Best Western over there. Just behind that parking lot is where the trail runs and you'll see a hundred and thirty people. Uh, and then, uh, related to that, uh, also there on March thirtieth, the King of Prussia Business Improvement District is having their annual awards. Program and luncheon, uh, as well as promoting the progress of the bid. Uh, in those awards though, uh, we, Montgomery County will be receiving one for the transportation category and it will be awarding the Chester Valley Trail. Um, project which, uh, uh, is, they recognize as being many years in the works and a lot of hard work to be done. Uh, and such an important link, uh, between Chester Valley Trail and the Skookel River Trail where, uh, intersects here in Norristown. So, um.
Are we gonna have both county, uh, Chester and Montgomery County folks there?
At the Ribbon Cutting, uh, Che- Chester County has been invited and I'm, I'm kind of.
I hope so.
Somewhat, I don't know if we'll get.
It's like a golden spike.
It kind of is, although, yeah. Um, we did, yeah, we did Butts County the year before in Pennyback, so, um, these are great regional efforts. Um, okay, so moving on to the handout, the Monco twenty forty implementation grant program. Uh, was, the deadline was March first, so we have our full crop of applicants now in our hands, uh, which Anne and staff are definitely managing. Uh, the committee meetings will start at the end of the month to review these projects, uh, I don't have this list in front of me, but about half of you are on that committee. Uh, as well as, uh, staff and a few department heads, uh, from the county. Uh, in summary of what we received, we got, uh, twenty-five applications, a total of three point seven million dollars requested. Our budget or our allotment this year is two point five million. Uh, so there'll be some deliberation of that, it is a little less than, uh, we were over four million in the last, I think, the last two years of requests, so.
Mostly bike.
Yeah, uh, it's, and I'll first point out though, three of those, uh, application or three of those communities, there are twenty-two municipalities who submitted applications. Uh, three of those submitted two, which they're allowed to do, um, they will by rules only receive one at, at the most. Uh, so some of those will be cut in that process. So you know, and as far as the types of, uh, products, projects received, uh, it's, uh, you know, pedestrian projects. Uh, and park projects were really the most popular overall, um, they always have been popular. Uh, this is the year, as Anne puts it, the year of pickleball. Three projects, uh, related to park improvements that would establish new pickleball facilities in the park. Um, and that is something we had funded before, uh, but as if you don't know, that is the national praise and, uh.
I remember it was Upper Gwinnett who came in, that was the first time I ever heard about pickleball when they came in, I was like, what?
Hotter for much joking, you know, pickleball, um, and look, look.
Evidently, it's not just for seniors, that's why, it's happening. The leagues have become very popular.
Yeah, so, uh, park improvements are always a little, but you know, we, there's issues of, you know, maintenance versus, you know, new improvement type projects, so that always, uh, comes to light. I'm sure will be an issue this year, um, but other than that, I won't say too much more, we'll. You'll, you'll be getting, if you're on that committee, you'll be getting an email hopefully by the end of the week. All right, you'll, you'll get it very soon and that'll direct you to, uh, access the full applications and direction on the process again. Uh, leading up to the committee meetings, which will be two, first one on March thirtieth. All right, um. Update on the Skookel River Passenger Rail Authority, uh, the quarter ID program, the application. I mentioned each month since it came online in December, but it is reaching its finalization, those are due. Uh, the last week of March, uh, we hope to have ours in probably, uh, at least a week or two ahead of that time, so, uh, mid-March. Uh, it's coming together well and we've had a lot of, uh, letters of support, uh, from important, uh, partners, putting up and, uh, send the ANTRAC. Uh, and others in our municipalities that are involved with the anchor stations. Uh, so that is, uh, continuing and optimistically looking with that. Uh, the, uh, I want to give you an update on a project, uh, that initiated, uh, fairly quickly, but, uh, is, is exciting. And that's the Perkyomen Creek watershed flooding study. Um, we heard from, in fact, I think this board heard from the county commissioner, heard from Crystal Gilchrist, a former, uh, employee here, but, uh. Since, uh, uh, retiring is, uh, really, uh, gotten to grassroots advocacy for. Dealing with what have been increased flooding events in the Perkyomen watershed, I'm talking about the entirety of the Perkyomen Creek area, which includes several watersheds. Um, and so she has partnered and actually now, uh, is working for Representative, State Representative Joe Webster. Uh, they were able to get a million dollars from D E P, uh, to put for, code a program of doing a, uh, a flood study through that entire region. Uh, it's, it's going to be complex, a lot of that money will go to consultant work to, to do the work. And it involves, uh, not just us, it does involve three other counties, um, where the majority over of that land. Uh, but fifty-two, fifty-five, depending how you look at it, municipalities, uh, which will also need to be out, you know, have outreach and participate in providing data. Uh, to get in the study, it's not a full one, he said in plan, but it's, uh, uh. Uh, we'll look more at the existing conditions and what projects can be identified that would, uh.
Her obsession with this has, has kind of benefited us immensely, I mean, I said Crystal's obsession, she was here, I mean, I, she's, she's an old friend of mine and I. I credit her with such hope and resiliency, but just talking to Tom O'Brien. At Transportation, he said one of his biggest issues are the storm events, so our transportation planning is so linked. With these issues of what's happening in the natural environment and we don't always make that connection, but it's very.
Yeah, definitely, so it, it is, we're still figuring some things out and, uh, there's some questions still need to be answered, but. Um, we're excited to take advantage of this opportunity, um, because it's a good one. Uh, just a quick update on Monco twenty fifty, the conference of plan staff, and when I say staff, I mean virtually all of staff, uh, at this stage. Is participating, working on the background documents, uh, that have resulted from focus topic meetings, uh, last year. And, uh, putting those into what are very targeted, uh, four-page series of eight to nine, four-page. Um, documents that will guide us with trends and issue identification and, and data. Uh, to help, uh, support the vision exercise, which will be the primary, uh, activity of the plan, uh, going forward. We hope to bring those to you in June and July over a series of two meetings and, uh, uh, like I said, that's taking a, a concerted effort. And, and a really impressive one so far, and, uh, thanks to Chloe and Anne who are leading that effort. Very well. Um, National Planning Conference, uh, I think I mentioned last month, but that is April first and fourth, uh, coming up. And I won't look through every, uh, list, but we are, uh. Very actively engaged, uh, we have, I think, five educational sessions and involved with up to eight mobile workshops. Uh, along with a few orientations, um, we were able to, uh, make our budget work and get, uh, attendance to the conference. To all the staff who wanted, and actually I think it was, uh, the total came in between fifteen and nineteen.
That's cool, yeah.
That's all, it is, it's, most of us have done, I mean, I'm, the only national conference I've been able to go to is the last time it was in Philly, so it's, it's a rare opportunity. It's hard to, to get there when it's not here, um, so, uh, I'm very glad that we were able to, uh, figure that out and that people have that opportunity. Um, and the people who are involved at with, with the work, the presentations and, and especially I'll continue to give Patty a shout out, because she's on the committee. Uh, uh, actually several are, but, um, uh, certainly her, her role has been huge and, uh, is helping to pull this together. But working with nationals, uh, more than ever is probably not an easy thing to do, but I'll save that for another conversation. Um, the I I J A, I wanted to incorporate any updating I could to keep you guys apprised of, uh, you know, things that are happening and, and they make you aware. Uh, one great news piece is that the one, uh, Safe Streets for All program. Uh, D D R P C entered an application in partnership with the nine counties, uh, to get a one point four seven million dollar grant. This will fund, uh, D D R P C to do a regional Vision Zero actual program, uh, which we'll be participating in, this will identify projects and action steps in that places throughout the region. Uh, that will allow our municipalities to apply to future funding for the S S, uh, four A, as it's called, Safe Streets for All. Uh, program, uh, for money to make physical road improvements and reduce crashes, so. The, the notion is, you know, anyone could have gone in for this grant to do a study in their community and we recognized, uh, you know, with others that. Um, we're all fighting for it and all doing this individual, it was very less efficient and, uh, not as many would do it. So the idea of doing this regionally allows us to create a plan to involve everyone to the level that they can be and then come out of it with. What's, what's really important is not only identifying the projects, but then the, uh, planning background that will help you get the money, uh, once you apply. Uh, and having that plan in place is, is, and I think it's required actually, if you're gonna continue to see funds from that program. So we're excited to be a part of that and thinking will help our municipalities and the county, um, over that course of time.
Is the county aware on that, if any individual municipalities did go after money, I know of my professional life, we're tracking. There are many at the municipal level that also got money, um, I think primarily on the action plan. Uh, not so much on the implementation program piece of that grant, but is the county kind of tracking?
Right, there were, there were a few and I don't know if either Matt, I don't know if they had to cut out for, uh, previous engagements, so I don't know.
Oh, you guys are aware of them.
Yeah, yeah, I know they are definitely aware and I, I, I can think of one off the top of my head that I heard them mention, but I don't know the comprehensive list. Um, other, two other things, points I wanted to make too, um, D D R P C just yesterday, I think, a- a- announced that the region has so far received. Two hundred and fifty-eight million in competitive I I J A grant funding and you recall from our detailed conversation a couple of months ago. That's not the formula, uh, funding increases where we have benefited probably the most from. Uh, but rather the discretionary, discretionary and competitive grants, which, um. You know, sometimes look great, but aren't always, uh, opportunities that we're in line for, and the results, I think, from this early return and the opposite, this is a long. Period, uh, that I J A will be in effect, um, reflects that, uh, the biggest grants went to the city and SEPTA. Uh, two biggest were, uh, safety improvements on Roosevelt Boulevard and seventy-eight million and fifty-six million to SEPTA for ADA accessibility improvements. Uh, at subway and L stations, so, uh, you know, we don't always have the, the competitive ability for some of those larger scale programs that. And many of them were intended for the big city items, but I thought that was telling, just hearing that those numbers right now. Uh, one in particular that came up and that we discussed here was the Reconnecting Communities Program. Um, which announced its latest awards, uh, a week ago, Narberth had applied, um, to, for their pedestrian underpass below the, the. Uh, SEPTA Amtrak Station and they did not get it. Um, the only one who did in the region, uh, was the city and they're getting a one point eight million dollar, uh, grant to study issues along the Vine Street Expressway. So they, again, tells you the magnitude of type of project that really a lot of these, these programs are, are geared to, to be cited on. Um, there were four other unsuccessful applications, uh, outside of Monco, uh, putting Upper Darby, another SEPTA, Philadelphia Housing Authority. Um, that's, that's what I had on, just to give you a, a bit there. Um, last thing, I'll just move to a couple of events, uh, I want to mention, you received the, uh, email yesterday. Uh, we just want to point out, in addition to Chester Valley Trail, there's another, uh, there's a groundbreaking event on March twenty-fourth. That will be in Fort Washington Office, uh, Park, uh, or Business Center, Office Park. And that, at the Upper Dublin Public Library to, uh, celebrate the initiation of, uh, the newest portion of the cross-county trail. Uh, which is a, a, Upper Dublin has actually been shepherding, uh, we've contributed, uh, some funds from the county as well. And part of the development of that through, through the Fort Washington and Virginia Drive, uh, uh, section. Uh, county commissioners will be out there as well as staff.
It was March twenty-fourth.
March twenty-fourth at eleven A M.
That's actually the project that we've been doing.
That's actually the project that we've been doing landscape plans for, so that's, this is the first section that we had a chance to have some input on. At least for that part of it, landscape.
Yeah. Um, March thirteenth, the Springfield Trails Public Meeting Open House will be held, uh, another project that we're working at the municipal level. Talk about the uh, local trails system that they're planning for, uh, in developing in Springfield Township. Uh, on March fourteenth, uh, Matt's, Edman's not here, but he'll be on the podcast circuit doing a interview. With the Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Environmental Council, uh, talking about the new carbon funding, uh, federal transportation funding category. Uh, which is part of I I J A. And uh, we'll see once, uh, how that turns out and uh, provide links, uh, for anyone listening. How that conversation goes. Uh, and then finally. Uh, I mentioned, actually, I can mention, yeah.
Staffing, staffing.
Staffing, uh, we are still, still open to five positions.
Five positions.
It's, it's actually been five for a little while. One. One of those was the uh, Assistant Director or Assistant Manager for Patty Section Design, which was empty for a long time, then filled, then empty again. And it's out there now. Uh, the, the G I S Senior Coordinator position is just being posted, so that's, uh, hasn't, uh, had much, uh. That one I'm less worried about than the planner ones for whatever reason, I'm told, the, the talent pool is out there. The community planner and the two uh. Uh, county planners that have been open for a while, especially the county planners. Uh, we've had a lot of difficulty getting, uh.
Can we do any advertising through the uh, conference?
Um, we can, I, yeah, um. We are in the, those have gone through A P A. Um, I don't know, we don't usually go up the national route because it's.
Well, our housing prices are better than in L A and.
But.
I don't know, it's just a thought.
Inquired before even about the state conference there. You would think there would be an opportunity to advertise, be an onboard.
Really isn't. I don't know, that's changed since the, you know, since people can go online, find out the jobs. And back then, it used to be that you had to read it in a newspaper.
We gave you a T-shirt.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to, the door consumed too full at this rate, right, at this moment, but the. The bottom line is we, we need to offer more money, and that's what we're trying to, still trying to uh, get some where. We have a. Easily accessible milestone in, in this, at the summer, at this point in the summer with compensation study that, that they're doing. But I haven't, uh. I'm trying to make, I'm trying to make a play before then, and if, if nothing else, influence that. But um, that's, that's the number one problem. We're getting, we're not getting that many applicants and that may be because they're just, they're turned out by the offer.
Scott, I, I know this is really outside of the box, but has the county ever thought about, um, like hiring private? Uh, recruiters to fill these positions?
Oh, they've done that for like the super high, you know, director H H S, um, it's pretty expensive. But that one, to be honest, um, but. Yeah.
I found it, I found it, you know, worthless.
Yeah. That's, that's on him.
We put us behind schedule, Scott. Uh, is there any, uh, any comments from board members before we close?
No, thank you, Scott.
Will not be here next month, so Dolce will take over the reins. Taking advantage of my wife's two weeks off for Passover, so we're heading.
They're passing out back.
Trying to Portugal for ten days.
Good dad, isn't it?
Or to be there too, as we do in Brazil.
They may speak our Portuguese, but I will.
You have to bring your own lock. Like, I tried getting in England and, and pass over.